Twenty twenty meeting of the Millbrae City Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
As a member Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Pappen.
Present.
Councilmember Leva.
Here.
Vice Mayor Snyder.
Here.
Mayor Holliver.
Present.
All councilmen are present.
All right, we all please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic. The which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Thank you all. We have a very special guest with us this evening. And Elaine, maybe if you can change the settings so people at home can can see a little bit better. But we are honored to be joined by our state Senator Jerry Hill. Senator Hill, thank you for joining us. And, you know, we'd like to honor your term in the Senate is is coming to an end. But you've spent the past three decades in public service, starting with the San Mateo City Council, the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors, the State Assembly, and also the State Senate. And you've been an excellent representative for Millbrae and for the Peninsula. And we're sad to see you go at the end of the year, but we wish you, you know, all the best in all your future endeavors. And we thank you so much for all of your service to our county and to our to our region. Senator Hill, would you like to make a few comments?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the honor tonight. I can't tell you how grateful I am for it because, you know, frankly, there are a number of cities. I live in San Mateo, but as you know, where you live, your community is a little broader than just your city. And and that's where my affection goes out a couple of cities. And certainly Burlingame is right next door. But Millbrae is a city that I frequent often. I spend a lot of money there as well, which is a good thing. But but I just enjoy the city for its character, its values, and really its diversity. I mean, it represents what this community, what this county, what this state is, and and it's a value that we have to cherish. So I appreciate the honor. It means so much to me because it's from Millbrae and because of the friendships that I've made with with all of you. And certainly, Mr. Williams and then the staff and everyone in the city, because you've just welcomed me always. And I enjoy so many of the things, whether it's the Lunar New Year celebration or or shopping at Trader Joe's, as I do often, or the Safeway that's there, or the coffee. I mean, it's just all the things that I enjoy in Millbrae besides the eating and the dining. But it's it's a wonderful honor and a recognition, and I look forward to us having that. Hopefully, our paths cross in the future many times. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for, you know, attending so many of our events and honoring many of our community organizations over the years. We hope to continue to see you in our community and hope that our paths continue to cross.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let's see, Vice Mayor Schneider, comment?
Again, just want to say thank you, Senator, from your time in the Assembly when we first met. You've always been somebody I can go to for advice. I want to tell everybody here something that the, I can't remember if you were a senator or still an assemblyman. The event that you hosted at Kenyatta College, where you invited the public in to actually be part of a budgeting process, to teach the public how difficult it is to adequately spend public dollars. I think of that all the time. It's something that I hope we can bring to Millbrae. And I also, as a volunteer during the San Bruno gas explosion, you fought like a tiger for everybody that's been hurt in disasters. And I'm very grateful for that and grateful for knowing you. And my mom, as a Canadian to your wife, happy Canada. Now you can go spend some time up in Canada. Wish her the best for me. She's going to get you back to the family now.
Thank you, Ann. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Councilman Lee.
Yes. Senator Hill, I'm going to definitely miss you. You've been quite an asset to the county and the city San Mateo. You've always been a great advocate for all peoples, and you've attended many of our ethnic activities. And particularly the Chinese community, very much appreciate all the work and 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 your participation. So I'm just, I am very humbled and and very glad to be able to work with you and meet with you and and have the opportunity to and have the opportunity to work on a few things with you. So thanks again, and I know and I hope that you always stay involved and I hope to see you around.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Councilwoman Aliva.
Senator Hill, congratulations. Job incredibly well done. I have to say that you've been a mentor of mine since my father's days. And in San Bruno, I'll never forget the friendship you had with him. And I would admire looking up to you and and seeing how how possibly I could give back like you have over the years. So hopefully, I will. And I thank you very much for both everything you've done in Millbrae, for our county, and for our state. I'm going to miss your position that you're in, and I'll see you around town.
Hopefully. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Pappen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Senator Hill, thank you so much. You've always been accessible to all of us here in Millbrae. You've represented us so well, and you're not going anywhere per se. So we still continue to look forward to working with you because there are so many things. San Mateo County, the city of Millbrae, we all have to do in bringing our communities together and through COVID here. And really, hey, congratulations this year, too, on your vaping bill. And really, saving a lot of lives through that. I know that was really an effort, and I'm sure the parents and everybody here really thank you so much. And we look forward to continuing work with you. Thank you so much for all your representation and everything.
Thank you, Councilmember Pappen. I appreciate it. And and thank you all for the friendship over the years. That I hope continues as well because it's such a value to me. And and the great leadership that you're providing to Millbrae is, I think, extraordinary. And so keep up the good work and thank you very much for this great honor tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you, Senator, and thank you for the partnership you've had with the city. And I hope you continue to to stay involved in some way, and I'm sure you will. And I'm sure we'll see you soon.
I hope so. Thank you very much.
Good night. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, we are now going to move to the next item on the agenda. It is a proclamation honoring the 75th anniversary of the United Nations. And we have with us this evening Xavier Webb with the U N A USA Mid Peninsula. Mr. Webb, just, are you here with us?
Mr. Mayor, I do see that he's here, but I don't see that he have a speak.
Okay. Well, well, we are honoring the 75th anniversary of the United Nations. And any comments from the council or Mr. Webb? Thank you for, you know, requesting this proclamation. Obviously, incredibly important organization that we hope will continue to be strengthened in the future. Councilwoman Pappen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is really a great honor here because I know, I believe I'm correct in saying, United Nations started in San Francisco at one point. There was a lot of, I have a huge banner when they had their 50th in San Francisco. So the roots here for the United Nations, and I know United Nations Square in San Francisco and the Civic Center there, really bringing countries together. It's so important right now because we have wars going on on top of pandemics. And acknowledging this and the hope for a future of resolving a lot of this is so important. So thank you very much, and hopefully, we can really come together as we need to. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Webb, it looks like you're you're here. Would you like to make a few words?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I was having some technical difficulties. Yes, thank you, and thank you to the City Council for bringing this on your agenda. We are a small grassroots organization based in the Peninsula, and our mission is to advocate and educate on behalf of the United Nations at a local level. Our territory covers from South San Francisco all the way down to Sunnyvale. And the goal this year was to get every city within our territory to have this proclamation, ran at their city council meeting, and accept it, and also have the flag waved. We were very successful this year where we had 15 of the cities in our territory actually accept the proclamation and including the county of San Mateo to do this. We want to bring awareness up into the city of Millbrae, and we want to get some more volunteers so we can start having events up there once the COVID is over. Where we can have education for the children as well, because we know that educating the children about the United Nations is so important. Especially given today's climate, like the young lady spoke of earlier. Education of them is so important because we are in a divided world right now. And the mission of the United Nations is definitely to collaborate, and we want to make sure this message is spread across. So part of what we're doing with this is to develop a relationship with the City Council and work with you on the Sustainable Development Goals of the United Nations. And thank you very much for your time. Yes, Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Webb. Vice Mayor Schneider?
I thank you, Mayor. Thank you, sir. Some of us are also Millbrae Lions. I know that the Burlingame Lions Leos Club, the youth club, would go back to the United Nations for a particular event. I would love to work with you in the future for our own Leos Club. I'm one of the advisors to the Millbrae Leos Club. So, you know, please reach out to me and let's have virtual coffee and talk about getting our kids more involved. My sister, when she was in high school at Cappuccino, went out to the U N for an event. It was so long ago, I can't remember exactly what it was, but it definitely helped shape her college career.
Definitely. You know, we would definitely connect.
Excellent. Thank you for what you do.
Of course, and we're all volunteers. So and we're accepting all volunteers of all ages, religions, genders, races. So all are welcome, just like the United Nations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Webb, and thank you, Councilwoman Pappen, for mentioning the local ties. I also have a tie to the U N. My my grandfather actually worked as a civil engineer on the building in New York when it was built. So I'm happy to be able to bestow this honor commemorating the 75th anniversary. So thank you very much. All right, we will now move on to the next agenda item. This is the Agenda Overview and Staff Briefing. Mr. Williams?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to you, members of the City Council and everyone joining us on the meeting. As we all know, next Saturday is October 31st, Halloween, and we have several events where we kind of adapted to the COVID-19 pandemic to kind of celebrate for the community and all the kids out there. And so we've partnered with Rotary Club for a youth pumpkin carving contest. And that's a youth up to the age of 12 that are eligible to submit their pumpkin carving. Submission deadlines for pumpkin carving is midnight on October 28th. So that's coming up in in just a couple of days. Information can be found on the city's website at B I T dot L Y backslash Millbrae Pumpkin Carving. And we will have first place, second and third place winners that we will show during our movie night, also the evening of October 31st on Halloween. Also, we are continuing to have our annual Halloween House Decorating Contest. That's now being taken over by the Millbrae Community Enhancement Advisory Committee. And this year, anyone could submit either themselves as they decorate their home or a neighbor's home could submit by October 31st at midnight, actually 11:59 P M on October 31st. A decorating home that they would like to nominate. There will be winners chosen on November 3rd at the Millbrae Community Enhancement Advisory Committee meeting, and we'll be giving out gift cards to local businesses for those winners. Submissions can be sent to Halloween dot Millbrae C A C dot org. All this information is on our website, so we hope everyone participates and sends in some great homes here in Millbrae for Halloween. Also, Millbrae Treats on Saturday afternoon from 3:00 to 5:00 P M up in the library parking lot off of Poplar Street. The Millbrae Lions Club in the city of Millbrae will be hosting Millbrae Treats, which is a drive-through candy pickup location from 3:00 to 5:00 P M. And we hope that people decorate their cars, kids come in costumes, and very much like we did for the face mask distribution when the coronavirus started, we'll be handing out candy to 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 the children of Millbrae. So again, that's Saturday, this coming Saturday, October 31st, from 3:00 to 5:00 P M up in the library parking lot. So we hope many people can join us. Also, just a couple of safety tips for Halloween. As everyone knows, San Mateo County Health Office encourages that people do choose a safer alternative this year to celebrate Halloween. And they they're actually discouraging trick-or-treating in in the traditional way. And they're recommending that people plan early, identify safer options such as pumpkin carving at at home, scavenger hunt around their home, virtual costume contests with friends and family. But if people do do decide to get together, remember that the rules, outdoor is always safer, and that you limit those activities and groups to 12 people or less, as well as use pre-wrapped treats and avoid sharing of food and candy. Now on to to other business of the city. The section of Larkspur between 280 and Helen Drive will be closed intermittently. We're starting our final paving project for for Larkspur Lane. Actually, starting yesterday, Monday, October 26th is our final paving. So you can expect traffic delays and some minor inconveniences and and certain portions of the road closed and detours on Larkspur Lane from Helen Drive north to the 280 on-ramp. Also, voting is coming up. Our Millbrae Vote Center opens October 31st, also on Saturday, this coming Saturday. In-person voting is available at the Millbrae Vote Center. It's inside the temporary Millbrae Community Recreation Center at 623 Magnolia Avenue. And that voting will will start from October 31st through November 2nd, from 9:00 A M to 5:00 P M each day. And on Election Day, Tuesday, November 3rd, the Vote Center will be open from 7:00 A M to 8:00 P M. On October 31st, as I mentioned, the city will be co-hosting with the Lions Club a drive-in movie theater in the parking lot just to the north of the city. Anybody that wants to vote in person, we will have accommodations for parking along Library Lane. The owner of the parking lot north of City Hall has allowed us to to use those parking lot spaces through through the voting period, and and we'll have people out there to to help direct traffic on the 31st. So don't worry, come out and vote. We also have curbside drop-off that's available starting November 1st on Library Lane between Poplar and Magnolia, just north, the street just north of City Hall. There's no need to park. All you have to do is drive by, drop off your ballot. There'll be people there to pick up your ballot at the curbside ballot box and and provide direction. The curbside ballot drop-off starts Sunday, November 1st from 9:00 A M to 5:00 P M. Monday, November 2nd from 9:00 A M to 5:00 P M. And then Tuesday, November 3rd from 7:00 A M to 8:00 P M. Also, we want to remind everybody to get their flu shots. Health officials across the Bay Area and across the country are asking the public to remember to get their flu shots and get their annual vaccination. And also, good news, I'm sure everyone's heard, and we also have this posted on our website. The state did move San Mateo County into the orange tier for the coronavirus. And so that means that expanded indoor activity is allowed. So malls and retail stores are open, personal care services such as nail salons and hair salons are open, family entertainment centers such as, you know, miniature golf, that type of thing, are open at 25% capacity. Museums, zoos, aquariums are open at 50% capacity. Places of worship are open at 50% capacity. Movie theaters are open at 50% capacity. Gyms and fitness centers and indoor pools are open now at 25% capacity, moving from 10% to 25%. Restaurants are open at 50% capacity, moving from 25 to 50%. Wineeries are open at 25% capacity. And allowed outdoors now are bars, breweries and distilleries with with modifications when they're outside. So no longer do they have to serve food. They're open before outdoor activities only. And then playgrounds and outdoor recreation facilities are open. This came out a couple of weeks ago, actually, in San Mateo County and and the city of Millbrae. We did open our playgrounds about two weeks ago. So good news. Everybody continue to do their job and and keep safe. Also, I'd like to wish our city clerk, Elaine Tran, happy birthday today. It's her birthday, so everyone wish Elaine, our city clerk, a very happy birthday today.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Then lastly, I'd like to welcome our new Community Development Director, Darcy Smith. She's joining us this evening. Darcy has just a tremendous amount of experience, and I I'm so just thrilled and and feel lucky to be able to introduce her as part of the city team. She has 15 years working on the redevelopment and build-out in San Mateo at the Bay Meadows site, has a wealth of of experience, over 23 years of experience in the in the Bay Area on infill development, urban planning. She's a she's a graduate from Stanford with her master's in city planning from San Jose State. And without any further ado, I'd like to introduce Darcy Smith as our new Community Development Director, who started yesterday. So I think Darcy would like to introduce herself, so I'll hand it over to her.
Yeah, thank you, Sam Andrew Williams. So I just want to say hello, Darcy Smith, the new Community Development Director. I'm honored to be selected to work with Mr. Mayor and honorable council members and the city manager Williams and the great staff here. I just wanted to tell you a little about myself. I am fairly local. As Sam Andrew said, I went to college down the road, but I've been visiting Millbrae for over 30 years now. So I know the rich history of the city, and my immediately family lives here, and I live just down the road in San Mateo. So I'm very close, and I know the Peninsula well, and I know many of the challenges and opportunities that you face. And I have children and nephews who spend a lot of times at the park and the playfields. And, you know, I'm a very I'm very active in the community. And I see the potential for the future, very passionate about creation creation of jobs and housing in the right locations. And Millbrae has those opportunities to grow near transit, which is great for the environment, but also to create a robust economic engine to really support the quality of life initiatives that are important for the community. And now more than ever, you know, funding for the city's initiatives is very constrained. And I'm very passionate about the the opportunities to create economic sustainability to fund the things that are so important to the community, such as libraries and parks, which I I frequent often. So I'm very honored to be here, and I'm passionate and look forward to a really bright 2021. Welcome, Darcy. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
All right, Mr. Mayor, again, welcome, Darcy. Then, real quick, Agenda Overview. We have our standard items, calendar of events and reports of bills and claims as information items. We have no meeting minutes to approve this evening. Then we move on to oral reports from city committees and commissions. We have no reports this evening. After that, we have public communication. That is for any member of the public that wishes to address the City Council on any item not on the agenda. And the City Council allows three minutes for that communication. Then moving on to the Consent Calendar, we have six items on the Consent Calendar this evening. Item number five is appointments to city commissions and committees. Item number six is a resolution to amend and update the Youth Advisory Committee bylaws. Item number seven is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the Second Amendment to the Agreement of V A Consulting Engineers. Item number eight is to designate the city manager as the authorized representative in pursuing the California State Water Resources Control Board Water Recycling Funding Program to fund the recycled wastewater system project. Item number nine is to receive and file the monthly general fund financial report for the period ending September 30th, 2020. Item number 10 is approval of the Friendship City Agreements with Ramallah, Palestine, and the city of Donghuang, China. We have one public hearing item this evening, and that's a public hearing to consider adoption of the Final Climate Action Plan and the initial study and negative declaration for adoption of the Climate Action Plan. Moving on to existing business, we have no items under existing business. We have two items under new business. Item number 12 is to initiate the refunding process for the 2009 Series A and Series B wastewater certificates of participation, known as C O Ps. Item 13, under new business, is to consider the adoption of amendments to the Energy Code for the of the Millbrae Municipal Code for Title 24, Part 6, Energy Code, and Part 11, the Green Building Code, and to adopt the local reach codes to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. We will open the wave the first reading, introduce the ordinance, and then we will actually have the public hearing. Mr. Mayor, open it for a public hearing this evening, and then also have the public hearing two weeks from from this evening. After that, we have council comments, and there's nothing to report out of closed session. So that concludes the Agenda Overview.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Williams. Okay, oh, see a couple hands up. Vice Mayor Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull item five and item eight from Consent Calendar.
Thank you. And I received a request to pull item six for a public comment. So. Okay, so that wouldn't, so five, you said items five and eight?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. All right, we will now move on to public communication. This is the opportunity for any member of the public to speak on any item that is not on this evening's agenda. Speakers will have up to three minutes, and there will be a timer on the screen. And let's, so if anybody would like to speak on any item not on the agenda, please use the raised hand feature. There's also a call-in option that is on the agenda of on the city website. Not seeing any. Oh, okay, looks like we have, the first speaker will be Zach Georgopoulos.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to talk about the Mills Estate Park issue that's not on the agenda. And I guess that's what this section is for, is for items that aren't on the agenda. At the last City Council meeting, the City Council passed a, I don't know if it's a resolution or or what it is, but it's it was essentially an authorization for the Parks and Rec Commission to move forward with a grant for the Mills Estate Park specifically for soccer fields. There's been some discussion between the public and parks. And there was a letter issued by the city manager stating specifically that the city will no longer be pursuing the grant this time as a result of the public wanting more input. However, at the first input meeting or, you know, public outreach meeting to take place after that letter, it seemed as though they're on the same track as they are, as they were to obtain the grant. And what concerns me is that the grant is specific to that one thing, to to fields, if I understand it correctly. And the whole point here is to get public input as to other options. So I guess what I'd like to do is encourage the City Council to revisit this issue and perhaps perhaps rescind the authorization at this time in order to be consistent with the letter of October 16th, 2020, issued by the by the city manager, which went out to the public through a variety of means, indicating that they will not be pursuing this grant. And it just seems like there's an inconsistency here in the policy as to whether that grant is being pursued by this December 14th deadline or whether it's not being pursued in favor of having public input before pursuing such a grant. or whether it's not being pursued in favor of having public input before pursuing such a grant. Um, so that's all I had. Thank you for letting me speak.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next uh speaker is Stephanie, and if you could please um provide your last name for the record.
Hi, my last name is Play Haven. And uh, I'd like to second Zach's comments. Um, Mayor Holber, I would specifically like to ask you if indeed you and the council have formally rescinded your consent um in keeping with city managers' letter of ten sixteen twenty for application for the state proposition sixty-eight grant for renovations to Mills Estates Park, has that been done?
Uh, I'm sorry, this is not a a a an opportunity for back and forth communication, uh, we're we're not allowed to respond to um to public comment at this time.
Okay, then I would further like to say I did send written communication to both the council and the mayor requesting a response prior to this meeting this evening, for which I have not received any.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Uh, unless, yeah, we can respond to you offline, but thank you. All right, the next uh speaker is Alessandro, and again, if you could provide your full name.
Sure, um, my name is Alessandro Bitucci and uh I actually live just around the corner from the Mills Estate Park that uh you've been hearing about. Um, I, my opinion differs a little bit, I would like to urge the council to not uh back away from the this opportunity. This park is uh really, it's an embarrassment um for the city of Millbrae and for Mills Estates. Um, I think anything we can do to improve that property will be a a great change for our community. And uh, I I see this as a great opportunity that should not be passed up. I agree that there needs to be further uh research into what the community wants, but I urge the council to not drop it completely and to still pursue this grant. Because if we lose this, I don't know when we're going to have another opportunity like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing uh no other public comments, uh, public comment is now closed.
Sorry, I was um doing thumbs up, but I don't know if you saw my thumbs up, this is.
Okay, now, uh, we're using the raised hand feature, but.
Oh, it's not alive.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, um, I just had two questions. I also um support Zach and Stephanie on the Mills Estate Park. I just wanted to sort of highlight that there needs to be meaningful input from the community and nearby area. And it doesn't seem like there's enough time to get meaningful input, including the four um community outreach meetings before the December deadline. And my second question was, we've noticed that there's been an increase in the number of planes coming from SFO flying over Millbrae. So it'd be great to get an update if there's a change in the flight patterns so far, those are my two uh inputs, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for those comments. Okay, seeing no other raised hands or thumbs up.
Mayor, I'm sorry, this is Vice Mayor Schneider, who was the fourth person, so I can add her name to my notes?
You value, uh, Libia, you?
Olivia Yu.
Hi, yeah, Olivia Yu.
Thank you, Mr. Yu.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, seeing uh no other raised hands, public comment is now closed. Uh, we will now, public comment is now closed. Uh, did you like to comment on that?
I both, I believe the city manager had some input on the parking wreck, I mean, this seems to be, yeah, I mean, if we just get a tiny update on that, sorry.
Yeah, real real quick, um, we uh, we will not, and we don't have enough time to pursue the grant uh for the soccer field. Um, so we are definitely not pursuing the grant for soccer field. As a result of a uh, the the first neighborhood meeting, there was some communication relative to park improvement. So we are continuing to analyze, uh, and we have another meeting coming up uh this week as to, you know, is there playground equipment, are there trails and enhancements to the park that the community and neighborhood would like to see, that we could still perhaps qualify for the grant? But we are definitely not pursuing a grant for the um, you know, for the for the soccer field and 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 the envision build out. So um, they are correct. Everybody, please uh log on to uh the city's uh homepage, our recreation division uh for meeting notifications as we continue to get uh, you know, great input and feedback from the neighborhood and the community at large to to see what we can do with Mills Park.
Okay, all right, thank you very much uh for that. Uh, we will now move on to the consent calendar, we have pulled items five, six and eight. So that leaves us with items seven, nine, ten and eleven. Uh, I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong agenda here.
Yeah.
I was, I was going back to our uh, yeah, so I, seven, nine and ten.
Make a motion to approve seven, nine and ten.
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappen.
Aye.
Councilmember Aliva.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
By uh Mayor's Holiber.
Aye.
Okay, consent items seven, nine, ten, pass unanimously.
Okay, let's now move to item number five. Um, I think Vice Mayor Schneider, did you have a comment or question?
Thank you, I have a request. Um, I would like to request that item five be pulled into two parts and that the vote for Amy Lauer for Millbrae Community cult or Millbrae Cultural Arts Advisory Committee be removed. Um, I would like to recuse myself from voting on that particular item as an abundance of caution, I want to remove myself. And I replied to an email celebrating the renaming of a road in Millbrae to Harriet Tubman Way. I went on to say how uh I hope that getting Amy on to the cultural arts committee will help us work on some Black History events. And there were other council members on that email string, which I didn't pay attention to, I just replied. So I'd like permission from the rest of council to recuse from voting for culture arts, but still be able to vote for all of the other recommendations.
Well, it sounds fine to me, so maybe we can take this as two motions.
And I'll make a motion to approve uh Amy Lauer to the Arts Commission.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Lee, a second from Councilwoman Aliva, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Mayor, if if I might, um, I I need to make a note of something, uh, in addition to the uh email, uh, I'm told that uh, Councilmember Schneider also spoke with one of the members of the subcommittee and I I were, I appreciate her recusing herself and that's the proper thing to do uh in this instance. I just want to point out, uh, the city uses ad hoc committees, such as the nominating committee here, for a specific purpose. And what it is, is they're they're less, they constitute less than a quorum. Uh, it enables them to, you know, two people, two members of the council, uh, and they're different members for different purposes um, to meet individually a and work through things, such as going through the nominations for these different commissions. Um, the 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 problem with that is, is is that once the two members of the subcommittee meet, they cannot speak with any other member of the council uh regarding the subject matter of their deliberations. And so I believe what happened here is there's also a conversation with Councilmember Pappen. And uh, just point out that the ad hoc subcommittee is really a very useful, flexible purpose. But um, from now on, please just note that if there are two members on a on a subcommittee, once they've spoken to each other, nobody else can speak to them about the topic, because that makes the magic number three, that's a quorum. And any meeting, any issue discussion of uh of a matter that comes before the council that includes three people can't be done. Um, the remedy here is fine, I I think if if uh Vice Mayor recuses herself, um, that takes care of it. Uh, the council has yet to act on this, so you're voting fresh, acknowledging of the 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 this communication. And uh, I just felt like I needed to point that out, it's just important, we we try to be careful with emails. We try to say, don't reply all, um, but uh, it's always sort of a challenge, it's it's so easy to speak with each other and and uh, you know, want to want to uh, you know, we're excited about the city, but um, it's important that the decisions for the city be made in 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 trans, you know, in 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 open and really in the meetings where everyone can see it and there's.
Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Conrad.
Mayor, point of clarification.
Very quickly, yes, go ahead.
Okay, um, at uh Saturday at Farmer's Market, I brought um a couple of people over to meet a candidate running for senate. And I turned around to Gina, who was standing there and said, oh, is this issue on the agenda? The council member didn't hear me and interrupted me, and that's as far as it went.
Okay, thank you for that.
I hadn't looked at council agenda, it was Saturday morning.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Conrad, I mean, that's just an important reminder um not to be in contact with members who are on a subcommittee if you're not on that subcommittee and vice versa. Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second, we have a roll call vote, please.
Mayor.
Wait, I think I think we we think we've heard enough about this item.
Because if if this is the case, um, is this also applied for people using social media? Because, you know, other council members read the same ob- uh 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 opinion on social media, is does that jeopardize votes?
Um, I think it does if you state, you know, an an opinion on an item that's coming, you know, on a council agenda.
Uh, again, if I might, recusal is is not a requirement of the Brown Act, I think it's an appropriate step. Um, we are all dealing with uh social media in a lot of different ways in our lives, um, including, you know, uh, watching it here. We have a new piece of legislation, actually, that was passed, uh, that was introduced by Assemblyman Mullen to try to uh address some of this. That I believe comes effective January first and we'll be getting you some guidance about that. So um, it's a continuing challenge. Um, and uh, again, you don't necessarily know who's out there and and the the statute's trying to deal with the fact that, you know, there's a wide audience on Nextdoor and some of these other platforms uh and trying to regular regularize that. Um, so uh, just a continuing challenge, that's all I can say.
Okay, thank you very much, and I, aye.
Thank you, Councilman Lee. Um, this action is to appoint um Amy Kelly Law to cultural arts. Um, so Councilmember Pappen.
Aye.
Councilmember Aliva.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Snyder is recused, Mayor Hallibur.
Aye.
Okay, the city council appoints Amy Kelly Lawler to cultural arts advisory committee by the vote of four, zero to one with Vice Mayor recused. Vice Mayor Snyder recused.
All right, I'll move to nominate all, to approve all the other um committee appointments.
Second.
Okay, second from Vice Mayor Schneider, can we have a uh roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappen.
Aye.
Councilmember Aliva.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
Mayor Holiber.
Aye.
The council unanimously approves the city commission and committees appointment to economic vitality advisory, I mean, sorry, economic vitality advisory committee, senior advisory committee and sister cities commission as recommended.
Okay, item, uh, thank you very much, next on the agenda is item number six, this is the resolution to amend and update the youth advisory committee bylaws. And we have a public comment on this item. Um, that individual is here, it's uh former Mayor Marge Cola Pietro, I believe that's your phone number calling in.
Yes, can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes.
Good evening, I was pleased page two of the staff report recommended the youth advisory committee the increase to seven members, also adding one alternate. This is a long time coming, please don't go below seven. The population of Mills High, Taylor Middle and seventh and eighth graders at Saint Dunston adds up to one thousand nine hundred seventy-eight students, according to my recent verifications. When I did the calculations, that means that with seven members, that would cut, um, each would be responsible, I can't think of a better word, for two hundred and eighty-three of the youth in the community. The resolution exhibit A, under the duties category, letter A, quote, provide a forum for discussion and resolution of issues affecting youth and facilitate communication between youth and city government. Under duties, letter C, quote, to act as a liaison with other city organizations, close quote, than some of the other city commissions and committees, all of whom are young adults through seniors, were listed. Nowhere did I see anything about the members of the youth advisory committee being liaisons or ambassadors to their respective peers. I would think if the city council wishes to encourage interaction and communication with the youth advisory committee and the other one thousand nine hundred and seventy youth in our community, not on the committee, you may wish to consider the following. Once youth are appointed, the mayor sends a letter to the principals of Mills High School, Taylor Middle and Saint Dunston School, announcing the names of the students from their respective schools who have been appointed to the city of Millbrae Youth Advisory Committee. They could congratulate those students and encourage other students to contact their liaison or ambassador if they so wish to give suggestions and or comments to the Millbrae City Council. Most certainly, that seems to be a better channel for the youth advisory committee members and other youth to, quote, engage and participate in city government, close quote. Perhaps the youth advisory committee can have some type of project that will attract our youth to express themselves via various means to the city council, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cola Pietro.
You're welcome.
Okay, all right, um, seeing no other comments, any comments from the council, oh, Councilwoman Pappen?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you to former Mayor uh Cola Pietro. We were very, very excited, the subcommittee, as to the um people who applied, the young adults who applied to this committee and we're very excited, we do hope we can expand the membership at this point in time and um really get to work with the youth. Uh, like I said, they're very impressive candidates, so I hope I would move approval of this amendment.
Second that.
Okay, uh, possibly it might be um useful to have it, the amendment in in writing.
It is, it's it's in the consent calendar.
It's on the consent calendar.
Uh, uh, okay, I thought you were referring to um Councilwoman Cola Pietro, former Mayor Cola Pietro's uh amendment that she had suggested.
It addresses that.
Um, I I believe that if if, for clarification, I believe that was as to the actions they take beyond this appoint. Um, I, as I understand it, and maybe staff can clarify more, so that the leadership does automatically rotate. Um, I could be wrong, if staff could clarify for me.
Uh, Councilmember Pappen, rotate in terms of?
Chair and vice chair.
They do, I think it's uh at the pleasure of the committee, so there is a an annual rotation.
I couldn't find that in the in the bylaw.
It's on page four. Um, it's page five of the attachment, but page four of the bylaws, under rules. The committee shall during the month of September each year appoint a chair and a vice chair. We shall serve at the pleasure of the committee for a period through May thirty-first of the following year.
So that means it it's a one-year uh chair, one year for the chair, one year for the vice chair.
I believe that's correct.
Okay, so that gives other opportunities to other people to uh step up for the leadership positions and give them the experience.
Correct.
Thank you so much, and did I, uh, Mayor, did you want to have a copy of this? I was kind of confused, there were a couple of people talking at the same time.
Oh, well, well, I heard, I I I thought you had mentioned also a suggestion um that um, you know, the the city contact the schools regarding the the membership and, uh, you know, other items that were not um necessarily included in the.
That was just some kind of, uh, you know, some something I thought of very quickly that brings it down to the. that brings it down to the interaction between, between youth. And I see that they can be, you know, go to other committees and commissions, but those are mostly adults. So this was just something that I thought they may appreciate. You know what I'll do, not to hold things up, I will email a copy over to the birthday girl, Elaine.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'll do that tomorrow, if that's okay, Mayor.
Sure, perfect.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Follow the question?
Yes. Do we have a motion to approve?
And a second from Annie Aliva.
Okay, a motion from Councilwoman Pappen, a second from Councilwoman Aliva. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lee.
Hi.
Councilmember Pappen.
Hi.
Councilmember Aliva.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Snyder.
Hi.
Mayor Hallibur.
Hi.
The council adopted the Resolution to amend the Youth Advisory Committee membership and bylaws unanimously.
All right, thank you. We now will move to item number eight. Vice Mayor Snyder.
Thank you, Mayor. I pulled this for a couple of reasons, but basically an opportunity for the public to understand how complicated and difficult it is to apply for grant funding, regardless of the project. First, I want to thank staff for the work that they've done. This particular item is to go forward with researching the ability to turn our sewer water into tertiary water, which is another way of saying non-potable reusable water or recycled water. So for me, I find this absolutely exciting. I congratulate staff. If anyone who is curious about how the city applies for grants and what qualifies within this staff report is the term shovel-ready. Shovel-ready is how a lot of grants are going, and it means that for an entity, for a city to apply for grants, their project has to be so close to cutting, to being able to put a shovel in the ground, that that's the only way they're going to get funding. So it's really important, and for example, I'm on the County Bicycle Pedestrian Committee. We only give out grants every two years. And from last year and moving forward, we are really truly looking for shovel-ready projects. Now, I'm not on Parks and Rec. I'm not involved with the park at Mills Estates. And I'm sorry that it rolled out the way that it did. But I encourage the city to keep applying for every grant. Here's the reality, public. COVID is going to hit our budget. And if we want to keep moving forward, we have to be aggressive at getting grants. And this particular agenda item is really good at moving us forward and getting us to shovel-ready. So I congratulate staff. I would only add, sorry, Mayor. Congresswoman Jackie Speer has mentioned to me in the past how she helped us get the money. It's well before my time, money to help with the sewage treatment plant. I would encourage staff to reach out to the Congresswoman so that they know that we're trying to get our plant ready for tertiary. And for everybody who was concerned about our TODs taking up more water, by going tertiary, we can move that to watering landscape, providing enough drinking water and washing water and food prep water. So this is just a great program, and I'm so happy, and it's such a great night to do it with Climate Action Plan and Reach Codes. Thank you, staff.
All right, thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Snyder, a second from Councilman, sorry, Councilman Lee. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Hi.
Councilmember Pappen.
Yes.
Councilmember Aliva.
I'm going to say yes, but I kind of got lost in that last explanation. So yes.
That's a microaggression.
Nothing I read.
Okay. Vice Mayor Snyder?
Yes, and trying to ignore the microaggression.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Hallibur?
Hi.
Okay. The Council unanimously adopted the Resolution, destining the city manager as the authorized representative in pursuing the California State Water Resource Control Board Water Recycling Funding Program to fund the recycle wastewater system project.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on, we now have item number 11. This is a public hearing to adopt the final Climate Action Plan, initial study, negative declaration, and adopt the final CAP. This has come before us a couple of times now, so not, not new information. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have a presentation?
We do, Ms. Mayor, and I'd like to introduce Shelley Ryder for the staff presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Hallibur, members of the City Council. Let me bring the presentation up. All right. This evening I'll present on the final 2020 Climate Action Plan, initial study, negative declaration, and the final 2020 Climate Action Plan for adoption. I'll start with some background information. On February 25th, I had presented a staff report on the draft 2020 Climate Action Plan. And then on June 23rd, presented an update on the final draft, including our outreach that was conducted, the public workshop we held, comments received, as well as the measures added to the final draft Climate Action Plan, as well as performing CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. The CEQA review started right after the June 23rd City Council meeting and took approximately four months. And this included development of the initial study, negative declaration, and the required public review and comment period. The CEQA review was completed for the CAP to allow future projects and plans to tier from the programmatic CEQA document. This City Council meeting is the first meeting opportunity where we could bring this to the City Council for adoption. CEQA allows future development projects and plans to tier from the adopted CEQA document by demonstrating they will have a less than significant impact related to greenhouse gases if they are consistent with the measures included in the Climate Action Plan. The CEQA document, the initial study, negative declaration, was prepared by the consulting firm RINCOM Consultants. We had a 30-day public review and comment period, and we received one comment letter resulting in very minor changes to the Climate Action Plan, and I'll go into that shortly. As an overview, since it's been a few months since I presented on the CAP, the 2020 CAP includes a prioritized list of actions to reduce greenhouse gas emissions with a mix of voluntary strategies and mandatory policies. Many of these strategies are already in place and others are being newly proposed. The CAP will build on our existing programs and contains a total of 43 measures, 22 of which are existing, some expanding, and 21 new measures. Several emissions reductions will come from state and county-wide transportation and building strategies. There are four sectors included in Climate Action Plan, and there are measures included in each of these sectors, including for energy, which includes water conservation, transportation and land use, solid waste, and all sectors, the green business program that touches upon all of these other sectors. The measures included in the 2020 CAP were selected based on our city's resources and community, our staffing, our budget, population, among other considerations, and includes reducing emissions by 93,887 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent, resulting in a 49% emissions reduction by 2030. Approximately half of the emissions reductions will come from city measures and the other half from state measures, keeping in mind that the CAP is a living document that will be updated as new technologies and programs emerge. Also, just as a reminder, I had presented that we did get our final community-wide greenhouse gas emissions inventories for 2016 and 2017, and emissions were reduced by approximately 16% compared to our base year of 2005 to 2016, and approximately 19% below 2005 levels in 2017. The city has surpassed the adopted target of reducing greenhouse gases by 15% below 2005 levels 2020. The Climate Action Plan sets a new reduction target of 49% below 2005 levels by 2030. This is in line with SB 32 and includes an interim target of 32% below 2005 levels by 2025. A longer-term previously adopted emissions reduction target is 80% below 2005 levels by 2050, and that aligns with Assembly Bill 32. I wanted to just briefly outline some of the measures and activities done since I last presented in June. And this includes updating the administrative standard procedures for the environmental policy. This is our in-house policy, which now includes environmentally preferred purchasing guidelines. We've also have new administrative standard procedures for a clean and efficient fleet policy prioritizing electric vehicles. We're in the process of drafting a municipal zero-waste policy, and we've conducted outreach on the annual sun chairs program, which now has a battery storage component. We're doing outreach on Bay Rents, the Bay Area Regional Energy Network, energy conservation opportunities. And we launched the new Long Begone Program on July 1st, and we conducted outreach on all of our rebate programs. We're also pursuing adoption of the county's disposable food service ware ordinance to replace the existing one that was adopted in 2008. And this will be brought to the City Council after the first of the year. We've also researched the development of Reach Codes for adoption, and that will be presented later this evening. For CEQA, a CEQA review was completed for the 2020 CAP through the preparation of an initial study, negative declaration. The initial study determined that the implementation of the Climate Action Plan would not have a significant effect on the environment. The CAP initial study, negative declaration, was made available for public review and comment from August 25th through September 23rd. And we conducted outreach to public and agency to receive comments, and this was conducted according to the CEQA guidelines. The only comment letter we received was from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, which included recommendations, and I'll go into that next. We submitted a response letter to the Bay Area Air Quality Management District on October 8th, and those responses are included in Appendix Six of the initial study, negative declaration. The Bay Area Air Quality Management District provides some recommendations that we did not have to include, but we did, they were easy enough to put in. And one included, it recommended, including how the calculations for a 49% reduction by 2030 from a baseline year of 2005 is equivalent to 40% reduction by 2030 from 1990, which is in line with SB 32. All of the cities within this region use 2005 as the baseline because there is not data going back to 1990 to be able to calculate the greenhouse gas inventory. So we simply included a calculation. We worked with the region and county, the RACAP's program, a CECAD program, and the consultant, DNBGL, to simply include a calculation how the 49% is equivalent to the 40%. They also recommended including an appendix with the greenhouse gas emissions reduction calculations for each of the measures. While we had a very complex spreadsheet for that, we worked with DNBGL to include Appendix J to the final Climate Action Plan, then it shows the calculations for each of the measures. They also recommended an evaluation of how the measures contribute to meeting the carbon neutrality target by 2045. We did not intend to say that our Climate Action Plan, which goes to 2030, would meet the 2045 neutrality target. We reworded to say we're working towards it. They also recommended including a timeline for the measures implementation. And we had already started this after the dunding, and it was easy enough to include as Appendix I in the final Climate Action Plan. They also recommended changing the update to the greenhouse gas inventories. What we had in the Climate Action Plan was to minimally update it every five years according to ITG protocol, but ideally every year when we get the wonderful assistance from RACAPs to do so. So we changed every three years with every year ideally. Right now, they're working on the 2018 greenhouse gas inventories. They also recommended strengthening the language about the staff position that will coordinate the implementation of the CAP. There was language in there, and we simply strengthened it to say environmental programs will coordinate this implementation. They also recommended including reference to the CEQA checklist. While we had language in the Climate Action Plan that CEQA was being performed, we added that the checklist would be available for building applicants so that they can demonstrate consistency with the Climate Action Plan. The next steps include implementing the existing measures, expanding the specified existing measures, and implementing new measures as outlined in the Climate Action Plan. Some of these measures will be brought to the City Council for review and others for adoption of ordinances. We'll also provide periodic updates on the status of implementing the measures and the achieved emissions reductions, and provide an annual sustainability report. Amendment Six to the staff report includes a sustainability progress report. The City Council is being asked this evening, upon conclusion of the public hearing, to adopt the final 2020 Climate Action Plan, initial study, negative declaration, and separately adopt the final 2020 Climate Action Plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ryder. Any comments from the council? Okay, let's start with Councilwoman Pappen.
Shelley, congratulations and to the subcommittee. What a wonderful plan. Thank you so much for all your hard work and effort. I would move approval because we have a long night ahead. I hope we can get through this. Thank you.
I would sit through the, through the chair.
Thank you. Let's go to Vice Mayor Snyder.
Hi. Thank you, Shelley, and again, congratulations to all. Question. Tonight, based on the existing Climate Action Plan, we're approving a negative deck. If we did some minor changes to the CAP, even if those changes are done in the future, and I'm going to give you an example, would that mean we'd have to revisit a negative declaration? When I read through the CAP, both back in the wintertime, again in June, and then for this event, we're really good on emissions and on trying to reduce our emissions, but we're not really talking about capturing existing carbon. So my question for us and as a city is where will sequestration actions be? Sequestration is that fancy word of pulling carbon out of the atmosphere. And as many people have heard me talk about it, trees are probably one of the number one actions for pulling carbon out of the atmosphere. So if I were to say, hey, we want to do a tree program in 2020, 2021, would we have to go back and redo the neg deck?
We do have a tree planting program within our measures, so we are set to go with that. And we're forming our plans right now for that, that we can bring that after, well, in the next couple of months. So tree planting is a priority within our CAP measures.
Okay, and, but as well as any other sequestration, let's say for some reason we were going to do carbon farming on any of our public space that needs to be mowed. Would we get credit for that carbon farming?
We could do, if there are other measures, you know, one thing, you know, I'd mentioned how it's a living document. We can always do other programs according to our staffing and according to our budget. So if we wanted to add some programs that enhance the CAP, we have that ability. And we have programs outside of it now. We certainly do that.
I want to hear from the public comment. I have a comment in the CAP about, it's something new for me, the potential future burnout ordinance. And then on a particular page, and I'm happy, Mayor, if it's okay, to bring this up after public comment, to look at page 234 out of 445 on the staff report. It's a section on monitoring and improvement. There are three bullet points. I'd like to ask the council to consider modifying two of those three bullet points. But I can wait till after public comment, because I believe some of the public commentators might be talking about that particular page in the CAP. And it shouldn't affect the negative deck. But it will affect how we roll out programs.
Okay, all right, we can get to that momentarily. I had, so seeing no other comments from the council. I had a comment on page, it says page 17 of the Climate Action Plan. It's also in the negative declaration, page four. It mentions the Beacon Award that we received in 2016. We also received one this year, so I think it's important to add that in. And so, you know, we're not, so it shows that we're doing, taking action now as opposed to, you know, we did something good four years ago.
I don't know if Shelley can find it. I know I saw the Beacon Award 2020 on one of the pages, Mayor. I don't know which page, though.
Okay, it's at the bottom of page 17.
The achievements. Yeah.
Okay, it's page 146.
It outlines all of the city programs.
Okay. Well, it just mentions the 2016.
So it includes municipal achievements.
It doesn't mention the 2020 award that we just received a couple of weeks ago. So it'd be good if we could make sure that's included.
So Mayor, you'd like that in the resolution? I'm just making a little list here.
In the, in the actual Climate Action Plan.
Got it.
At the bottom, it's, it's page 146 of the attachment. It's page 17 and the top of page 18 in the Climate Action Plan. That references a Beacon Award received in 2016. It was also in the negative declaration itself, page four. I think it would just be good if we could add, you know, 2020 Beacon Award as well to stay. I think it would just be good if we could add, you know, 2020 beacon award as well to stay current here. Okay, let's go to public comment. And speakers will have three minutes. If you'd like to speak, use the raised hand feature. Or you can also use the phone in instructions that are on the agenda on the city website. Let's start with, the first speaker will be Dashil and if you could please provide your, your full name for the record.
Hello, my name is Dashil Leeds. I'm the Conservation Assistant for the Sierra Club Lomar Pieda Chapter. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I have a very quick comment on the climate action plan, a very small proposed language change that I hope you'll find approvable. So Gavin Newsom has said that the state of California's greenhouse gas reduction targets across the board are inadequate. And I think we can expect the state of California to accelerate its greenhouse gas reduction timeline. Meanwhile, locally, we have cities like Menlo Park, who has recently adopted a zero carbon by 2030 climate action plan. And we also have a goal of 80% by 2030 coming out of Palo Alto. So I think we're going to see a lot more aggressive targets being set, not only, only by the state, but also locally. So I think it's really important that we build flexibility into this climate action plan so that Milbrae is able to rapidly update our greenhouse gas reduction goals in response to the changing science and to the changing political climate and available funding. So I have a very small proposed language change, I think would be to page 105 of the climate action plan, section five, monitoring and improvement. The first bullet point currently reads, the environmental program staff will develop a report every year to summarize the results of the implementation progress for the climate action plan measures. I would propose adding a second sentence, which would read, annually, city council will review and potentially update Milbrae's greenhouse gas reduction targets and may modify and or add new measures to ensure that the city meets these new targets. We've included this specific language proposal in a letter sent out to city council tonight. Think it's a pretty quick change and I think it gives you the flexibility to really build more strength into your climate action plan down the road. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next speaker is Nathan Chan.
Yes, thanks, as always, to the city council for this opportunity to speak to you and to address the public. I've been a generally, I've generally been a fan of this climate action plan since it first was introduced and I definitely should be, think it should be approved, subject to the amendment that Dashil just mentioned, the same letter that he referred to is, I did sign as well. What I'm going to say from here on out is just speaking by myself though, which is that, you know, a climate action plan without a general plan that complements it is kind of like a boxer that only boxes with one hand. I think it's pretty unfortunate that we're not able to update the general plan simultaneously with this climate action plan because I could see a situation where the, they won't align and we might undo a lot of the emissions reductions that we seek to achieve with this climate action plan with a general plan that isn't, that is, that would increase VMT, that is vehicle miles traveled. So, you know, a general plan that ends up with the jobs housing ratio that's greater than 1.5 or doesn't have a plan for how to meet the housing needs allocation targets at all income levels, especially the lowest ones, or a general plan that doesn't have enough flexibility to allow for missing middle housing between single family homes and large apartment buildings. If we don't have, if, if these elements aren't addressed in the general plan, this might mean that teachers, public employees and service workers won't have the ability to live in Milbrae. And if they're not lucky enough to live near a transit station on Bart or Caltrain, that will probably mean they will drive to Milbrae to work. And I fear this will increase vehicle emissions in a way that our missions counting methodology won't be able to account for. Another aspect of our general, that our general plan affects is, is parking requirements. If we want to shift to a world where we use cars less, which is the goal of bills like Senate Bill 375, we need to make sure we're not just building ever more capacity for cars in Milbrae. Because if the parking is built, the, the cars will follow and then the vehicle emissions, the vehicle miles traveled will increase and so will the vehicle emissions. You know, I, I, what I saw from the general plan proposals three years ago was very encouraging, but since then it's been sort of crickets. You know, I just went to the website today and it did say that there were at least two major proposals coming this year, but it's almost the end of 2020 and we haven't seen any.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. All right, the next speaker is Diane and if you could also please provide your full name for the record.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Hallibur and council members. My name is Diane Bailey. I'm Director of Menlo Spark, a community climate action group focused on a swift transition to a zero carbon clean energy economy throughout our region. I'm commenting today just briefly in strong support of the climate action plan. This is an essential step forward to address the climate crisis. I want to echo the comments of Dashil Leeds, of Sierra Club and their letter and for all the reasons that he stated, request an update to the greenhouse gas targets within a year of the staff update being submitted. And I really want to thank you for completing this climate action plan. I think cities really need to step up on climate action now as we begin to feel the impacts of the climate crisis more and more with ever longer and more destructive wildfire seasons and heat waves and the threat of flooding our communities. I appreciate all of the hard work that went into this and I hope that you move forward to adopt the plan tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Bailey. Okay, seeing no other comments, public comment is now closed. I'll make a motion to close the, the public hearing. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappin.
Aye.
Councilmember Aliva.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
Mayor Hallibur.
Aye.
Public comment is closed.
Okay, I would be willing to entertain Mr. Leeds' suggestion of a friendly amendment on the monitoring. I think that is appropriate to include. Any other final comments from the council?
I'm sorry, is the maker of the motion, can I get, may I please get a comment from Ms. Ryder as to that friendly amendment?
Oh, thank you. So this is section four, monitoring and improvement on page 105 of the climate action plan. The third bullet down, I just want to read because it's similar, but doesn't include changing the targets. What it says within the current climate action plan is this plan may need to be updated based on the results of the greenhouse gas inventories. The city may modify and or add new measures to ensure that the city is on track to meeting its greenhouse gas emissions reduction goals. I just wanted to let you know that that was in there. What is being suggested is to annually review and potentially update the targets. Usually our greenhouse gas inventories are at least two to three years behind work implementing programs per time. So there's always that lapse. I would want to hear from either our city attorney or Kelly Bennett or mathematics with Rincon as far as if there's any effect with this equal document. If we change for the annual, changing the greenhouse gas targets and having that flexibility, there is language now on tracking and monitoring.
Shelley, Mike Connor here, there's, there's no effect sequel wise because you're not, you haven't changed anything yet. You're just changing how you're going to look at it. So until that annual review comes around and you change something, then you really wouldn't need to take a look at it from a secret perspective. And then even when you did, it, I think it would probably take something fairly significant that would trigger a significant impact that would require you to go back and reopen it. So at least for this change, it has no impact on secret.
Yeah, Ms. Councilwoman Bennett from Rincon and agree with that comment.
So for clarification, because I mean, we, our staff is very good here. Shelley, would you recommend this amendment or you feel that it's been covered within the current document?
It is, it's mostly covered. It's just a matter if adding flexibility on changing the greenhouse gas targets. If we have the capability to do so, it's, you know, it's, it's a good idea. I feel like we have wood in there and it's a living document. We, we put in the 2020, 2025 goal, the 32% as kind of a check-in. There's always a delay, you know, to see how the measures will have effect on the emissions reductions. So we have it covered to a certain degree. If we want to update and have the flexibility to change greenhouse gas targets, we can include that language. I would just recommend adding it to that third bullet.
Mr. Mayor, for clarification and thank you, Ms. Ryder, as far as that amendment goes. And, and I'd like to point out to the speakers today too. The difference in Milbrae is that we are not just a transit oriented development. The fact that this is an intermodal center. Studies will show that reducing greenhouse gases and getting people to take public transportation, which is critically damaged right now, shows that actually people are more willing to take public transportation to and from work than they are to and from home. The San Francisco Transit Study will show you that. Milbrae has already exceeded our housing element in that area and really, I mean, the focus here is reducing the greenhouse gases. So we need to get people access to the station area and back on transit. So if Shelley's recommending an amendment, that's fine. If she feels it's comfortable now, just let me know.
Yeah, it's actually page 106, not 105 of the climate action plan. Okay, any other comments? Vice Mayor Schneider, yes, go ahead.
Hi, I think what the gentleman from the Sierra Club, Mr. Leeds was talking about is the same page that I was looking at within the cap. It's page 105 or 106 with the conclusion. But it's really staff report or packet item to page 234 of 445. And that third bullet point, when we were talking about how the state or the federal government or even locally may change initiatives. I'm less concerned about how we count stuff that has already happened as opposed to having the city in a flexible position to be able to apply for funding as initiatives change. So when you look at the third bullet point on page 105, which is page 234, it, it says updated based on the results of the GHG inventories, but some of our planning may be changed because of state initiatives. So I would just like to have the, the addition there of languages, not just on the results of GHG inventories, but state initiatives, state and local, I'm sorry, federal, state and local initiative and funding programs, because it'll open us up to being able to write, this goes back to us. Every time staff wants to apply for a grant, they have to come and ask us permission to apply for a grant. Usually we've got enough time, but if this happens and there's a quick grant to apply for and we're on hiatus in August, it's complicated. So adding a little bit of flexibility here makes it easier on staff in the long run.
Yeah, actually, I apologize. I was looking at the wrong version of the report. I was, I guess looking at the prior version.
There's two different sections.
The wrong page 105. So yes, it is 105 of the updated report.
Yeah, so it's kind of the first bulletin point was what Mr. Leeds from the Sierra Club mentioned. And I had mentioned three, just a little bit of wordsmithing to give us some more flexibility.
Okay.
Do the chair, please?
Yes, Councilwoman Aliva.
I want everybody to be reminded this is a working document and we can bring it back at another time. This is a reading and a working document that does not, I mean, we take the public comments and we can, we can add those as agreed upon. But we don't need to wordsmith this.
Yes, we do, because it's the ability to apply for grants. So I disagree with you, Councilwoman Aliva. And I work in this field, so I'm pretty familiar with it.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Is the maker of the motion willing to accept those friendly amendments?
Again, just clarification from Ms. Ryder, whether she feels these amendments are necessary at this point in time or as was noted, living, breathing document, because we are all committed to this. So what would be your recommendation, please?
I, I think it's fine to include that language and we'll have the regular monitoring. So I, I think it's fine. Thank you for asking.
So, and those would be the amendments of the callers or?
I would make those amendments. Yes.
The, so just for clarification then, so I move approval with the recommendations as stated by the callers. Is that correct?
Yes, and can you also include in the, the 2020 beacon award to be added into the final document?
I would be willing to do that, sir.
Thank you.
Call for the question.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Who made the second? I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Aliva.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappin.
Aye.
Councilmember Aliva.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
Mayor Hallibur.
Aye.
The city council unanimously approved two actions, adopt the final 2020 climate action plan and initial study negative decoration and adopt the final second, I mean, sorry, adopt the final 2020 climate action plan with amendments.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, thank you for all the hard work on this. It's been a long time coming. All right, we're now going to move on to item number 12, new business. This is to initiate the refunding process for the 2009 series A and B wastewater certificates of participation or COPs. Do we have a presentation or a report from staff?
Yes, Ms. Mayor, I would like to introduce our finance director, Mr. Mike Sung.
Is Mike available?
Your son?
Mike was on, you know, Ms. Mayor, let's, if it's okay, if we can move to item 13.
Okay.
And I'll see what technical difficulties Mike is having.
All right, let's move ahead to item number 13. This is the adoption of amendments to the energy code of Milbrae Municipal Code, also known as REACH codes. Do we have a presentation?
I'd like to reintroduce Ms. Shelley Ryder with the presentation.
I am trying to bring that up because I didn't have it open. I may have to leave the meeting and come back, so I was just closing down my other presentations. I'll, I'll need a moment. Thank you. I'll have to leave the meeting, I think. Sorry, bud. Shelley, I want me to, I can check.
Here screen for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I just don't have those other documents, so I prefer to get those other documents so that I have everything. It's just I need to leave the meeting for a moment. I expected to have the time between. If you could just give me a moment or check on, to see if the finance director is here.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Lee.
I have a question for the attorney. I'm on the board director of Minnesota Clean Energy and we gave a $10,000 grant to study to reach code. I'm pretty sure I can still be on this boat, but I just wanted to make sure, verify that with the attorney.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see a problem with that.
Thank you.
Not a party that's before the council on this decision. They simply had a position.
Okay, how about we take a five minute break and we can come back and see if Mr. Sung is available at that time, if that works?
Sounds good.
Okay, let's take a break and Mr. Williams, if you can let me know when, when we're good to go.
I will do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh. The report, no sooner on Climate Action Plan gets introduced, than Gina takes it and makes it a motion, which shouldn't.
Hello, I just want to remind everyone, this is still streaming, so make sure you mute your mic. And also, if you don't want to be broadcast, please also turn off your video. Thank you. Hello, Mike, we're taking a five-minute break, but we're still recording and still broadcasting.
Hey, Shelley, it's Tom Williams. Are you ready to go?
Hey, Tom, it's Mike. Sorry, I had technical difficulties. I'm, I'm good to go. The schedule still holds.
Okay, Mike, the mayor's will be here shortly. We'll get things started. I apologize for the technical difficulties to everyone.
Okay, are we ready to adjourn, to, or to reconvene? Looks like Mr. Sung is here. So go ahead and call, call the meeting back to order. And can we have a presentation that we're, we are? Mr. Williams, shall we stick with item number 12 to stay in order here?
Yes, Ms. Mayor, let's start, keep on the agenda with item number 12.
Item number 12, this is the, to initiate the refunding process for 2009 Series A and Series B wastewater certificates of participation. Mr. Sung?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do apologize for the technical difficulties. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers today. Let me go ahead and share my screen here. Can you see the PowerPoint presentation?
We cannot. Maybe somebody else has access to the presentation, Mr. Williams or Ms. Tran?
Yeah, Ms., Ms. Mayor, we're having some problems here on the, on the city office side with our drive. So I would just recommend, Mike, if you can just take the council through the process here to initiate the funding for our 2009 participation. And then I think you have the staff report, mayor and city council and the public. So, Mike, I think verbally would be okay.
Works for me.
Well, Ms. Mayor, it looks like we may have lost Mike again, so I'll, I'll take, here we go.
All right. Oh, you're muted, Tom.
Yeah, this is, this is the city clerk. So, Ms. Mayor, I will, I'll take the liberty to take the council through this process. So this item is to initiate the refunding process for the 2009 Series A and Series B wastewater certificates of participation, known as COPs. On December 15th. Okay, Ms. Mayor, so on December 15th, 2009, the City Millbrae Finance and Authority did issue 5.56 billion of Series A COPs to finance the acquisition and construction of improvements to wastewater collection and treatment enterprise here in the city. Concurrently, Series B COPs were issued an amount of 10.25 million to refinancing, to refinance outstanding subordinate notes in a 2005 bank note installment agreement. So the total current principal that's outstanding is 11.2 million for both Series A and Series B COPs. So the current certificates of participation will result in a $6.3 million interest fee over the next 19 years, which is, which is the term of the current issuance as compared to a refunding that we're proposing this evening, which would reduce the interest fees by 2.7 million over the next 19 years. Next slide, please. So, so why now, right? Why, why not, why bring this now? So the COPs are currently subject to an optional redemption, so we can refund for savings as interest rates are near historic lows. There was actually a provision in the, in the current COPs. We could not refund the bonds for 10 years, so that 10 years just expired here in 2019. We've kind of hit the sweet spot where we've just retired the 10, or we just have come through the 10 years and interest rates are at a historic low. So we, we, we as a city have kind of gotten lucky here, which, which is great news. So with the city engaged in a water and sewer rate study, we will be incorporating the refunding savings and help minimize projected sewer rates. As the council public know, the council did move, move to agree to retain a consultant to look at our water and sewer fund, our sewer rates. And so this refunding will be part of that study. Tax exempt refunding for Series B COPs produces significant debt service savings, even when the federal debt service subsidy on the Build America Bonds is eliminated. Next slide, please. So just in summary, the total debt service for the 2009 Series A and B COPs is estimated at 17.5 million. The total debt service for the refunded bonds in the listed scenario is $13.9 million savings, but then estimated 3.6, 3.2 million in net present value savings or 29.2% as a overall percentage, if we refund the principal and interest on the outstanding debt. The debt schedule will not be extended with the refunding. Our debt expires December 1st of 2039. The requirement for the debt service refund is 1.3 million. That will be eliminated with this refunding. Savings are currently estimated to range, it's, it's, there's a chart in the staff report, but the current estimated savings annually range from $102,000 to $326,000 per year. That's the way the principal and interest payments work on the refunding. Savings are net issuance of all costs. Cost of issuance would be paid for in the bond proceeds and rolled into the debt service payment between the time the refunding occurs and 3039, excuse me. Yes, 30, 2039. With the council's directions, we will begin working on the refunding transaction with the expectation that we bring this to the council in early 2021. Actually, we're trying to get this to the City Council at the second meeting in January to really kind of expedite this and take full advantage of the, the low, historic low interest rates that we're currently seeing. Next slide, please. So if you happen to answer any questions, Mike Sung is here in my office as well as he has. So I would share my computer with him if there are any questions I can't answer. And, Mr. Mayor, in terms of the action we are seeking this evening, it is to direct staff to move forward to initiate the refunding of the 2009 COPs that would save the city just a little over $3 million to the life of the debt issuance.
All right, well, thank you very much, Mr. Williams and Mr. Sung and everybody who worked on this. This is a big, this is huge in terms of the savings to the city and to our ratepayers over the years. Taking advantage of these historically low interest rates. I would say if there's any other bonds out there that we have at a, at a high rate, you know, now would be the time to look into it if, if there is any other sort of low-hanging fruit here for savings to our residents. And this should also help with the upcoming rate study, I would believe, in terms of the, the total debt service reduction over time. Any comments from the council? Okay, Vice Mayor Schneider?
Hi, thank you, Mayor, and I agree with your comments completely. Well done, staff. Question, what exactly would this mean to our ratepayers? Is there going to be anything that they might see once this goes into a place? Or is this just going to keep rates stabilized for a longer period of time?
I believe these, I believe the refunding will actually save the city anywhere between the 102,000 to $326,000 estimate over the next 19 years. Those would be factored in when we do the rate study, so that this would basically lower the rates based off of that.
And just to clarify, that, that's an annual, annual saving.
I think you've just made our public very happy. Thank you.
All right, let's see, Councilwoman Pappen?
Now, congratulations and agree with the mayor, too, if we can find anywhere else to do these savings. Awesome. Move approval after comment. Thank you.
A second.
Councilwoman Oliva?
Oh, ditto. You took the words right out of my mouth. Thank you very much. Looking the best news we've had in a long time, so thank you very much for being on top of it. Good job, staff.
Okay, all right, and seeing no public comments. Looks like we have a motion from Councilwoman Pappen, a second from Councilman Lee. And we have a roll call vote, please.
Excuse me, I'm gonna have to jump on to do the. Okay, Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappen?
Gladly, aye.
Councilmember Oliva?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Mayor Hollibur?
Aye.
The City Council unanimously approved the staff to initiate the refunding process for the 20, 2009, oh, sorry, 2029 COP.
What about Councilmember Lee?
Did I not ask for his vote?
You did, you asked my vote.
Okay. It's been a fun night.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for that. All right, moving on to the final item of the agenda, the adoption of amendments to the Energy Code of the Millbrae Municipal Code and the Green Building Code to adopt local REACH Codes to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Ms. Ryder?
Yes, thank you again and good evening, Mayor Hollibur and members of the City Council. I'm back again, and thank you to Jane Powell for having my presentation as the drive is down here. So I'll now present amendments to the Energy and Green Building Codes to adopt local REACH Codes to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And I'll start with some background information. Next slide. The pre, at previous City Council meetings where I presented on the Climate Action Plan, there were comments from both the public and the City Council on including more mandatory measures, including REACH Codes for building electrification. Already included in the draft Climate Action Plan were two sections of the REACH Codes. One for non-residential solar and EV infrastructure, that's electric vehicle infrastructure. The REACH Codes go beyond the standard energy codes and California Building Code, building electrification, solar installation and electric vehicles, charging station, infrastructure for new developments. Building electrification means that buildings use only electric appliances for space, space heating, water heating, clothes drying and cooking. These REACH Codes would only apply to residential and non-residential new building developments. The City Council Infrastructure Subcommittee met on September 17th to discuss Peninsula Clean Energy's model REACH Codes. We discussed the Menlo Park Model as well as the County of San Mateos and some other adapted REACH Codes. Based upon the Infrastructure Subcommittee input as well as further research and discussion with Peninsula Clean Energy, the final ordinance was based on these and other adapted REACH Code provisions. The adapted REACH Codes are all based on Peninsula Clean Energy's model templates. Local governments are required by law to adopt new changes to the California Building Standards Code every three years as proposed by the state. The next cycle will take effect on January 1 of 2022. During a code cycle or independently of it, its optional local building code amendments such as REACH Codes can be adopted that exceed state code standards to meet local environmental goals. There are many benefits to adopting REACH Codes, including reducing carbon emissions associated with new construction. Electric appliances are a very effective way to reduce emissions, especially here in the county where Peninsula Clean Energy will provide electricity sourced from 100% greenhouse gas-free sources starting on January 1 of 2021. It reduces costs in new construction. It improves indoor air quality and the safety of buildings. It supports affordable housing and increases the adoption of electric, electric vehicles through the infrastructure. It also reduces greenhouse gas emissions alone by 70% for the electrification of heating and hot water. It also contributes to the state's goal of carbon neutrality by 2045 as well as Senate Bill 100. Meeting the city's Climate Action Plan that was just adopted, the emissions reduction targets requires looking at all sources of emissions. REACH Codes reduce greenhouse gases from new building developments and transportation. Implementing these REACH Codes will enable the city to reduce emissions by 3,111 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. REACH Codes will also help toward meeting the cap emission reduction targets, the community-wide by 49% by 2030. There are risks associated with using natural gas. More than 80% of a building's energy use relates to heating and cooling spaces as well as heating water. And natural gas is a fossil fuel that's typically used for heating space and water. Natural gas usage in buildings is one of the largest sources of greenhouse gas emissions, accounting for approximately 40% of all carbon emissions. Natural gas can be a safety issue, causing significant leaks and explosions. Natural gas can be a safety issue, causing significant leaks and explosions such that we've seen in this area. And is also a risk factor during earthquakes and responsible for twenty to fifty percent of post-earthquake fire ignitions. Gas lines and leaks can be dangerous during fires and typically take longer than electricity, take longer than electricity to restore after a safety shut off or inspection and repair. All electric appliances can be set up to be used with a backup power source like a generator or solar powered battery, batteries if needed during a disaster. Peninsula Clean Energy, PCE, working Silicon Valley Clean Energy, developed model reach codes for agencies which incurred building electrification, solar installation and electric vehicle infrastructure readiness for new developments. The County of San Mateo Office of Sustainability has also provided support for the codes. The model reach codes are based on cost effectiveness studies prepared by the California Statewide Codes and Standards Program and TRC, the consultant to Peninsula Clean Energy, and TRC specifically Farhad Ferman has provided tremendous support in the development of our reach codes. In twenty nineteen, the city received ten thousand dollars PCE to explore implementing reach codes. As background as well, the County of San Mateo and seven jurisdictions in the county have adopted reach codes. And this includes the cities of Brisbane, Burlingame, East Palo Alto, Menlo Park, Pacifica, Redwood City and San Mateo. There are approximately five jurisdiction jurisdictions in the county that are in progress of pursuing the reach codes. And that includes Daly City, Hillsborough, San Bruno, San Carlos, and most recently, South San Francisco. There are some remaining jurisdictions that are considering them. Some of the cities have adopted what's called the Menlo Park Model for its building electrification due to its ease of administration and efficiency. Reach codes are also being adopted in Santa Clara County with eleven jurisdictions adopting them today. I'm not, I'll now go into the proposed ordinance and I will start with building electrification. And I'll do this by building types. The first section for electrification is based primarily on the, on the city of Menlo Parks. For building electrification, the proposed require, or the proposed ordinance requires that new single-family dwellings, accessory dwelling units, ADUs and low-rise multifamily buildings, they are required to build to electric for space heating, water heating and clothes dryers. The exceptions being that it does allow for the use of natural gas for indoor and outdoor non-electric cooking appliances and fireplaces. For all of the different building types that are allowed to use natural gas, they must be built to electric ready for future electric appliance installation. For multifamily buildings, the projects that have received entitlements within one year prior to the ordinance effective date, they can install gas water heating, which is subject to the building official approval. Next, new high-rise residential buildings, they would be required to be built all electric. And that's for space heating, water heating, cooking appliances, fireplaces and clothes dryers. The one exception being that projects that have received entitlements with one year prior to the ordinance effective date, they can install gas water heating, and this is all subject to building official approval. For new non-residential buildings, they also are required to be built all electric. And that's for space heating, water heating, cooking appliances, fireplaces and clothes dryers. There are some exceptions, the first being for restaurants and food services, they can appeal for gas cooking appliances. We would put in a quick and easy appeal process for the food industry. Life, life science buildings may also use natural gas for space heating, and it has to do with that type of industry and their room temperature requirements. Also, public agency-owned and operated emergency operations centers such as fire and police stations may use natural gas. And once again, anywhere where natural gas is allowed, they must be electrically pre-wired for future electric appliance installation. Next is the solar installation part of the codes. And these proposed requirements for solar installation apply to high-density residential and non-residential buildings, including hotels and motels. There's already an existing requirement for solar for new residential low-rise multifamily developments, and that's in the building code from the last energy code update. For solar installation, the proposed ordinance requires that a solar photovoltaic system equivalent in size to fifty percent of the roof area, excluding any skylight area, would be installed on the roof or overhang of the building or on the roof or overhang of a structure located within two hundred and fifty feet of the building or uncovered parking installed with the building project. I should say, I'll be for the exceptions, this part of the ordinance is based on the city of Mountain Views. However, we tailored the second and third bowl to be relevant for Millbrae. The first exception being that a modification could be granted if it's demonstrated that the required percentage of solar will over-generate what is necessary to operate the building. The second one relates to accommodate shading, whether it's existing permanent natural or managed barriers. If there's not a certain percentage of solar access per square footage, then solar would not be required. Last, for vegetative roofs that meet all of the relevant code requirements, and that's for wind, fire and structural loads. The solar system may be reduced in size so that fifty percent of the roof area is covered in either solar or vegetative roof. The last part of the read codes is for electric vehicle infrastructure. And before I get into the elements of the proposed ordinance, I wanted to outline the definitions that we'll be talking about as well as the charging levels and range. Starting with the definitions, an EV charging station is, means all the supply equipment is there and ready to charge such as that we have in our local parking lots, the chargers there. An EV-ready space means all the power supply and associated outlet is ready and a vehicle can charge. For EV capable, it means the conduit is installed in the parking space, but it would need further electrical work before charging would be possible. For the charging levels and range of a one charger uses a one twenty volt AC outlet which plugs into a standard outlet like we have at home and provides four miles of range per hour. So you pretty much have to plug in for a while, at least overnight. Level two chargers use a two forty for residential such that we have for dryers or a two eighty volt for commercial and provide approximately ten to twenty miles of range per hour of charging. And last, we're mostly talking about level one and level two chargers. However, level and level two chargers are similar to what we have here in our public parking lots, except for the EV chargers which are level three, and they use a four eighty volt outlet to convert AC to DC and provide at least a hundred and fifty miles of range per hour of charging. So basically, within twenty-five minutes, you get eighty percent range. I'll go into the proposed ordinance. For electric vehicle infrastructure, the proposed ordinance requires that new single-family homes, townhouses and accessory dwelling units, ADUs with attached garages, they will be required to install a level two EV ready space and a level one EV ready space for each dwelling unit. For each unit with only one parking space, they would install a level two ready space. And just wanted to note, the picture on the right side is a level two home charger, a simple affordable space that you can have inside or outside of your home. And the exceptions being where there is no commercial power supply and also acceptance for ADUs and junior ADUs that add parking, they are required to install EV, EV infrastructure. And if the electrical panels are upgraded, even if there isn't parking, they must have the capacity to allow for a future parking space with EV infrastructure. And then an exception for spaces accessible only by automated mechanical car parking systems. And I should also say that this section of the reach codes for electric vehicle infrastructure is modeled after Peninsula Clean Energy's expanded, I should say, or enhanced model language. For new multifamily dwellings, and that's for buildings with less than or equal to twenty units, they are required to install a level two EV ready space for each unit with parking. And for buildings that have more than twenty units, they would be required to install at least a level two EV ready space for twenty-five percent of the units with parking and a level one ready space in each of the remaining units with parking. The exceptions for multifamily dwellings include where there is no commercial power supply. The same exception for ADUs and junior ADUs that had parking are required to install EV infrastructure as well as, as well as if electric panels are upgraded. Spaces accessible only by automated mechanical car parking systems. And for projects that have been granted entitlements within one year prior to the ordinance date, must install level two EV ready spaces and at least ten percent of the parking spaces, and this aligns with current state code requirements. For multifamily affordable housing, they are required to install at least one level two EV ready space in ten percent of the units with spaces and at least one level one EV ready space in the remaining units with parking. There is a note included in the ordinance for multifamily dwellings, and should the cost be greater than forty-five hundred dollars, then applicant could provide EV infrastructure up until that amount. For new non-residential buildings, and this is excluding office use, for ten or more parking spaces, they would be required to install a level two charging station in six percent of the spaces and at least one level one EV ready space and an additional five percent of the spaces. The exceptions being where there is commercial power supply and also spaces accessible only by automated mechanical car parking systems. And then there is a clause for the installation of fast chargers and after a minimum of six level EV charging stations and five level one EV ready spaces are installed. So there's a substitution after that minimum amount is installed. The last is for new non-residential office use and for ten or more parking spaces. They would be required to install a level two EV charging station in ten percent of the spaces and at least one level one EV ready space and an additional ten percent of the spaces with at least an additional thirty percent of the spaces to be at least EV capable. The exceptions being where there is no commercial power supply as well as spaces accessible only by automated mechanical car parking systems. The next steps after adoption of the reach codes would be with guidance from the Peninsula Clean Energy and their consultant from TRC would be to submit them to the California Energy Commission for Approval, and this take up to sixty days. After approval by the CEC, staff will submit the reach codes to the California Building Standards Mission for Final Approval. The ordinance would go into effect thirty days from adoption with the regulations being enforced starting on January one of twenty twenty one. Staff would develop an implementation plan to get all the protocols and procedures for development applicants to be able to comply with the reach codes. These proposed reach codes would be administered by the building division at Administrators Building in Green Building Codes. I wanted to next go into, when we talk about read codes, we're talking about what affects our new developments. And then sometimes there's a question, well, what about our existing buildings? There are a number of measures within the climate action plan and some that are in process now that reduce greenhouse gases from existing buildings. And just real quickly, these measures include continuing adoption of the latest Cal Green Building Codes, and that's outside of the codes, a residential and commercial energy conservation program that initially encourages minimum energy and water efficiency standards and becoming mandatory in the next following couple of years. A residential energy incentive incentives and rebate program, a commercial energy efficiency program, electrical panel upgrades program to leverage incentives as well as solar installation programs such as the annual sun chairs program. And also pairing battery storage with solar systems such as being offered right now by Peninsula Clean Energy as well as EV rebate incentive, incentive programs also being offered now by Peninsula Clean Energy as well as continuing our, our, our participation in Peninsula Clean Energy and opting for a hundred percent renewable energy like we do for all of our municipal facilities right now. The city council is being asked this evening to introduce, waive the first reading and set a public hearing for November tenth to consider an ordinance to amend the energy code and the green building code to adopt local reach codes to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Ryder, for the presentation and for all the work on this. I know this was another big item along with the climate action plan, but a very important one for our sustainable future here in Millbrae. Start with comments from the city council. Councilwoman Pappen?
No comments at this time, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Ms. Ryder, and this is again really exciting, even though once you hear the presentation, it's a bit dry, but it's truly exciting stuff. Question, you said that a portion of this ordinance is being modeled after Menlo Park. Now, Menlo Park, it's my understanding was if not the first, the second to introduce the, the reach codes. And both Menlo Park and the city of San Mateo, the first two are already updating and tightening up their ordinances. So my questions go to, why aren't we using, and you use Mountain View for solar, yay. But I've been told that Mountain View and Cupertino have some of the best new reach codes. So we've learned from what happened in the, in the early years, and now we can set our reach codes based on what's already been learned by looking at and adopting what Mountain View and Cupertino have done. And one of those, I believe, is not giving an exemption for biotech buildings, not giving an exemption for affordable housing. You had that slide, the one called Proposed Reach Codes: Requirements for Building Electrification. I, I think, and maybe some of the people who are presenting tonight or who are public commenting tonight will look at that particular slide, if we could pull that one back up, and see if we could move more towards where Mountain View and Cupertino are now than adopting something that Menlo Park and the city of San Mateo are already updating. And then I had a question about ADUs. I got lost a little bit in there. If ADUs are being put in a garage or put on an existing driveway, where will those ADUs put their electric chargers? I'm just curious. And then my last question, and this is more for staff, my understanding that my predecessors did a great job with the Safeway rebuild, they put charging stations in there, but then it took years and years and years for those charging stations to be built. Have we changed our process in the city to make sure that if a developer agrees to put in charging stations that they do it right away?
Thank you. Ms. Ryder?
Um, so as far as, as our ordinance and, and what it's modeled after, we looked at what was out there. City of Menlo Park is, is highly regarded. However, what the, the ordinance models after the building electrification with the exception for for households as well as multifamily. Some of the other ordinances that are out there that are be quoted, they also allow natural gas in non-residential. So there are these codes that are considered electric with exceptions, this one included. Oh, I don't think ours is old or out of date. It takes in, each section was, was looked at as far as what's appropriate for the community and the input that we had received at the city council infrastructure subcommittee wanting
I'm sorry, excuse me. To offer natural gas. What do you mean, Ms. Ryder, what do you mean by appropriate for our community? What does that really mean? Because wouldn't council know what's appropriate?
Based on, as I mentioned, the city council infrastructure subcommittee where we talked about the different codes. And it was discussed about following that, the, the Menlo Park model as it's called. We do include pools and spas to be electric. That's following what the, the county, so.
I, I understand, but after we had that subcommittee meeting, after the subcommittee meeting with Mayor Hallibur and myself, I reached out to more entities to find out what, what it meant with some of the multifamily dwelling programs and things like that. Because I, I don't want us to have to come back and do this again in another year. I'd rather we learn from lessons already out there and set those goals. And then if people have an exception to it, they have to come and apply for the exception. But during that infrastructure subcommittee, it was pretty much, and if you remember, I, I did want to see changes in some of this. And I still haven't seen those changes.
So for high-rise residential, they would be required to be all electric. The exception for the natural gas is for the single-family and low-rise multifamily, which is three stories and less. And that, that's what's in the current ordinance.
Okay, and then the ADU question, and then the Safeway question?
That it affects ADUs as the standard green building code does right now, and it's for attached garages or if there's electric panel upgrades, even if there's without parking, to provide that ability in the future.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may answer the last question, relative to implementation of conditions of approval, yes, we have made changes to, to ensure that new development does implement conditions of approval prior to the issuance of.
City manager, you cut out, but I think you were saying prior to issuance of the use permit?
Certificate of occupancy, making sure that all the conditions are. Certificate of Occupancy, making sure that all the conditions are complied with prior to certificate of occupancy.
Excellent. Very good.
All right, let's go to Councilman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I find that Menlo Park, I like Menlo Park's ordinance. I think it's closer to our city in terms of size and there's a geographic. I think Mountain View is quite bigger and larger and down in Santa Clara, so they have different types of governments. And so is Cupertino. So I think, I also like the fact that you're giving a appeal for restaurants using gas. And it's very critical because a lot of Chinese restaurants use gas. And I looked, I did some research about electric induction, and you just really can't cook the same way with electric induction because it doesn't heat up fast enough. So it slowed down the process of cooking and serving. So my question is, why do we have to have an appeal? Why don't we just not, we just allow it? Can you enlighten me, please? Shelley, please.
I think it provides a process and a way for us to know which of the restaurants and what they're using. All of these will be pre-wired, and some may choose. And even, and the residential, they may choose all-electric. It is cheaper to build that way. But the idea being that we will know which way they're building, basically. And I mean, I don't know, maybe Farhad may know. Are there some cities that don't have a type of appeal? I've just seen it in the ordinances that I've reviewed to have a process in place. Farhad is with TRC, the consultants at Peninsula Clean Energy. Thank you, Farhad.
Yes, good evening, Council. I'm Farhad with TRC. Thank you very much for hearing this item this evening. With regard to restaurants, I'm looking at this matrix of all of the different cities that have adopted all electric ordinances and the various exceptions that each have chosen to include. Many have chosen to include restaurants and a subset have only chosen to have a building official approval process, maybe about half and half at this point. The rationale, I think, is that restaurants are among the most high-energy intensity types of non-residential buildings. They are much higher than most other types of buildings that you would expect to see. And it is a process-driven type of business, right? So they're delivering a product. And the cost-effectiveness of electrifying restaurants has not yet been fully demonstrated to the extent that I'm aware of. So I think that some cities are being aggressive by saying, we would like all of our, nearly all of our non-residential spaces or, you know, building applicants to achieve electrification or at least strive for it. And if there is a situation where they feel they can't achieve it, then they can reach out to us, but we at least want everybody to look into it and try. And I think that's the approach.
Well, can we just provide some sort of incentive then? Give them rebates or let them? You know, to me, I think that there's just one more step they don't need to have, more bureaucracy that's not needed. So I'm thinking that if we're gonna, we're gonna okay with them anyway, I think it's best to just give them incentives to try out electric. I'm pretty sure that if it's a cost-effective way and it can still keep the quality of the food and provide service in the same sort of service level, I don't think, I think they would go for that. But, you know, I don't think, I think that, but I'm pretty sure that they probably would prefer not to use gas if they didn't have to. But I think that making them go through an extra hurdle is, I don't think is needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Councilman Oliva. Councilman Oliva?
I'm sorry, it was muted. Shelley, thank you very much. It's a huge step in the right direction. And I would concur with Councilmember Lee that we should be compared with Menlo Park. And for the size and pretty much the same population and downtown and such. I think that any step in the right direction right now is the right step that we should take. And quite frankly, we're gonna do all this work, and the state's probably gonna step in and tell us what we have to do very soon. So I would say let's just take it, take this reading and support it. And like Councilmember Lee said, be very compassionate to how we could take the businesses and make it user-friendly going forward. But we all have to think about this, and I think whether we like it or not, the state's gonna infringe what we need to do very soon. So I thank Shelley for this work, and I think that, let's move on. I mean, let's just waive the reading and go on.
Thank you. I had one question about, I noticed for residential buildings, there is an exception for projects that have received entitlements within one year prior to the ordinance effective date can install gas water heating. Can I ask why that is included?
Farhad, you could probably best address that.
Yeah, happy to. So this exception came about as a result of stakeholder engagement in the last year. And what we heard was predominantly in the multifamily building sector, that in situations where they would typically have central water heating. Replacing a gas water heater with a central heat pump water heater is a non-trivial replacement in that you often have a much larger footprint for the mechanical room and the mechanical equipment in general. And during the entitlement process, when the developers are putting together their performas, that larger footprint may actually bump out potential parking spaces or potentially dwelling units that could lead to changes in their performer calculations. So the idea there is, in a situation where there's an entitled, large multifamily project, that their water heating at least doesn't prevent the project from going forward.
Okay, so they would still be required to use all-electric appliances for the other functions, but not for water heating?
And provide raceway at least or any other pre-wiring for future.
Okay, okay. Right, that makes sense to me. Okay, I believe all members of the council have had an opportunity to speak, so let's now go to public comment. Let's start with Dashal.
Hello, my name is Dashal Leeds, Conservation Assistant for the Sierra Club Lomar Peta Chapter. Our chapter is in strong support of the ordinance tonight. I think there's room to go further, particularly with residential buildings, but sort of reading the mood in the room, I think maybe there's not the appetite on council right now to remove some of the residential exemptions for cooking. So we submitted those suggestions in a letter, but I think maybe that's something that Millbrae can hopefully work on and update their code. Our primary concern is passing this REACH code tonight. And I do believe that staff has prepared an excellent REACH code for consideration. It really is a good code. And I would like to defend the restaurant exemption language as currently written. I think the exemption process is a really nice compromise between trying to get as many new all-electric buildings as possible while still allowing some flexibility for the cases where restaurants can demonstrate infeasibility or a technique that can't be achieved with an electric cooking device. And speaking of electric cooking, I would just like to say that electric induction cooktops are actually extremely powerful and precise. They're used all over the world. Some world-class chefs, such as James Ramston of the Michelin-starred Restaurant Pigeon and Alexander Quilon of the Michelin-starred Restaurant La Marine are just two examples of very prominent chefs in restaurants who swear by induction cooking because of its precision and power. So I think, once chefs get a hold of them and use them, I think they'll love them. And because they don't produce a lot of excess heat, it's actually a really equitable working environment for kitchen staff. It really reduces the indoor air pollution for them. It keeps the working environment cool, so you get precise, accurate, fast food delivery and a good working environment for restaurant employees. And of course, all the benefits that come with greenhouse gas reductions. So again, I think you have a great REACH code before you, and I really hope you move forward with this adoption tonight. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next speaker will be Diane.
Good evening, Mayor Hollibur and council members. And thanks again for the opportunity to comment this evening. My name's Diane Bailey, and I'm commenting on behalf of the Campaign for Fossil-Free Buildings in Silicon Valley and our thirty-three member groups working together to accelerate a phase-out of fossil fuels from our homes and buildings. And our coalition supports the REACH code proposed by staff for adoption this evening. We sent some written comments earlier. I want to congratulate you on adopting a climate action plan this evening. That's a wonderful step forward. And the proposed REACH code requiring all-electric new construction for homes and buildings, as well as electric vehicle charging infrastructure, would be a key climate action in this new plan that you've adopted. So I hope you'll move forward swiftly this evening to adopt the proposed ordinance. And I appreciate the debate about the various exemptions. I think those are important considerations. This really puts you in good company with San Mateo County and the seven neighboring cities. As Shelley had mentioned earlier, they have each adopted REACH codes for all-electric new construction, very similar to what you're considering tonight. And this is really part of a broader movement in California recognizing the extreme health and climate damage of using gas in our homes and buildings. Thirty-five cities and counties have taken action to prevent or limit the use of fossil fuels like gas in new construction. So this would be a really important step for Millbrae to take. And we really need bold action like REACH codes to help transition off of polluting fossil fuels if we want to have any hope of achieving a stable climate in the future and averting the worst impacts. In fact, there's a steep cost of delayed action to moving off of fossil fuels. And that's not just in the health impacts that we face and extreme weather. It's actually in dollars and cents. There's a recent study from the Brookings Institute that modeled out the potential economic consequences of climate change across the US. And they found that under a scenario of inaction where climate change continues unchecked, that our annual GDP loss could be anywhere from six to fourteen percent. That's quite large. And on the other hand, swift action to phase out fossil fuel use and specifically gas use would benefit everyone in Millbrae because of the immediate clean air and health improvements that come with all-electric homes and buildings. So I hope you'll move forward quickly to adopt this REACH code this evening without any further delay. And let's all do our part towards a climate-safe future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. The next speaker is Chris Frank.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks for allowing me to address the council. So I've been a Millbrae resident for a little over two years and plan to be here for several more. I've also been volunteering with the local Sierra Club chapter for the last six months on a team that's been reviewing the climate action plans for cities in San Mateo and Santa Clara Counties and advocating for strong local climate action. And that's why I'm so proud of our city for considering such a strong REACH code. And I want to thank Ms. Ryder and others involved for their great work. The EV charging infrastructure requirements, those are great. Fully support those. My comments are gonna focus on gas because it's really bad for several reasons. First, it's terrible for the environment. It's not a transitional fuel. And installation of new gas appliances locks the greenhouse gas emissions in for years to come. A peer-reviewed study published last month by researchers at UC Irvine found that pollution from methane leaks in the gas production and distribution chain has been underestimated. And as a result, gas may have no less impact on climate change than coal. Other studies have reached similar conclusions. Gas is also bad for public health. Gas stoves release nitrogen dioxide, carbon monoxide, and formaldehyde, which can cause respiratory problems. Research conducted by the Rocky Mountain Institute found that air pollution released by gas stoves can reach levels that would be illegal if they were outdoors. In addition, researchers at Oregon State University found a higher prevalence of asthma among children who lived in homes in which a gas stove was used without proper ventilation. Finally, gas is inefficient. As electrification increases, the fixed cost of maintaining the gas network will need to be spread across a shrinking base of gas usage, increasing costs to end users. So I applaud the council for considering such a strong REACH code. There's opportunities to make it stronger, but I encourage you to pass it and to continue to take steps to get to a net zero Millbrae as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Frank. The next speaker is Nathan Chan.
Hello, thanks again for the opportunity to speak on this very important item. Some of the points that I was going to make in my comments were already made by Diane and Chris. So one other element that I wanted to bring forward was, in spite of these exemptions that are in the ordinance, I think the city needs to do its utmost to try to promote one-hundred-percent-electric buildings, even in cases where they're exempted. And one additional reason for that is that as we electrify more and more of our energy distribution system, that will mean fewer and fewer ratepayers will be maintaining the existing gas infrastructure. So it's very likely that any new construction that opts to include a gas hookup or pipes will be buying into an asset that will eventually become stranded. It's gonna be hard enough managing the transition of existing buildings to electric infrastructure in an equitable way that doesn't stick the bill to our most vulnerable and low-income residents. So let's not try our best not to make that harder by adding new buildings to the mix. There's one additional concern about REACH codes that I've heard raised by affordable housing developers, particularly the ones who are building one-hundred-percent-affordable developments. As you probably know, managing these projects is already precarious with all the demands placed on development in our area. And they have managed to ask for exemptions of one-hundred-percent-affordable developments from all-electric in at least San Mateo and Redwood City. I'm not sure that's necessarily the right option, but I think that it will require our city to be proactive when talking to affordable housing developers of one-hundred-percent projects to try to match them with the designers, the grants, to make their projects viable financially and be willing to consider exemptions in the case of technical infeasibility. We could also try to figure out if we want this requirement to be achieved, whether we could trade that off against other things, like maybe a reduction in parking or impact fees on those developments. So that's all I wanted to say. Otherwise, yes, I agree with everyone else who said like the REACH code as is could definitely be passed, and it would be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chan. The next speaker is Janet Creach.
Hi, good evening. Janet Creach, long-term Millbrae resident. And everybody that has come before me has said everything that I was gonna say. I have an induction stove. I love it. I can set it to temperatures. I can set it to time. I can walk off and leave it and not worry. I can, when you take the pan off, it stops cooking. And it has all the safety features that you could ever want in the stove, and it's fast. And I also want to note that PGD has already asked for a twenty-four-percent rate increase for natural gas. It's not theoretical. Gas is going to be more expensive than electricity and polluting. It costs us in the environment and costs us in our health and costs us in our wallet. And I want to encourage you to approve tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Creach. The next speaker is Terry Nagel, former Burlingame mayor. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Hollibur and honorable council members. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. I am speaking on behalf of Sustainable San Mateo County. And I wanted to add just a few things to the excellent comments that have already been made. First, you know, twenty forty-five, the date that the state has set for being at zero net energy. First, you know, 2045, the date that the state has set for being at zero net energy is not all that far away. When you're talking about building a new building that's going to last decades, it's only 25 years until that deadline. So the gas lines that you allow to be built are going to become stranded assets very soon. These are dangerous assets too, as we've seen with the explosion in San Bruno. And if you look at a website I could refer you to, there are many, many more of these gas explosions all over the place. They truly are not good things to have hanging around. So the other point I wanted to make is the mayor had talked about an incentive for having people go electric, and one incentive is indeed built into the Menlo Park ordinance that you have largely copied, but there are some portions that were left out. And those were saying, for example, when you allow an emergency center or a laboratory, that you put the burden of proof on the applicant to prove a special need for that facility. I have the ordinance in front of me. I can quote you the exact language if you want to add it. But I think that is a really good way to encourage the applicants to have to justify why they are asking for these exceptions. The other reason is that every exception is going to put a huge burden on your city staff. They're going to have to sit there and play referee with all these different applicants coming in and asking for this exception and that exception. The more streamlined you can make your ordinance, the more you can put the burden on them to come up with a reason for the exception, the easier it will be on your staff. And finally, you know, we all know that change is really difficult, but change with policy is the fastest way to get things done. As much as people will complain about things that they're not used to doing, as soon as you pass a new policy, I think you will be surprised at how quickly people adapt to it. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, the next speaker is Zach Georgopoulos.
Thank you for letting me speak on this topic. While I'm actually just here as a resident, it so happens in my career, I'm an attorney for restaurants. And I just want to echo Councilmember Lee's concern regarding requiring restaurants to seek a to seek a, an exception. The, the cooking is a creative process, and it's not easy necessarily for for chefs to adapt, nor for line cooks to be trained in that type of cooking. So there's an added expense there for, for restaurateurs to shift to electrical cooking. Also, the expense of the equipment is substantial, substantially greater than it is for gas equipment. And it's also very expensive to maintain and repair. Manufacturers of induction cooking equipment actually see their equipment as disposable, which from an environmental standpoint is anathema. It's, gas equipment can be repaired very easily and is repaired very easily and often operates for decades. Induction, induction stoves are often just seen as irreparable and, and basically just go to the landfill when they need to be repaired. So also, the, just the, the added hurdle for seeking exemptions for small businesses to open is, is, is substantially expensive. And I don't know, you know, how many of you may own or operate small businesses, but it's not easy to open a restaurant, and it's, there's often substantial hurdles in the opening stages already. Those are just some things that came off the top of my head while, while listening to this. So I just wanted to, again, I just wanted to echo what the council member said about perhaps adding incentives rather than a requirement or another hurdle for restaurants. And again, because this is a creative process, you know, you may be dissuading good restaurants from, from opening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Georgeopoulos. Okay, the next speaker is Robert Whitehair.
Honorable mayor, members of the council and staff, thank you for this opportunity tonight to speak briefly about the excellent reach codes before you. As a San Mateo resident who has now appeared on reach codes before seven councils in the county, I want to say yours is one of the strongest and best so far. I please adopt it without delay. Your council's direction to staff is great, and I, it resulted, I think, in a great ordinance. As a county resident, I am proud of Millbrae. There's been some talk about electric appliance availability and that likelihood that people, specifically chefs, will adopt it. In regards to cooking, there are now hundreds of commercial kitchens in California cooking with electric induction cooktops. Some examples of these restaurants include large chains such as Panda Express, all the restaurants in the International Terminal at LAX, and a growing list of many others. And many other types of cooking units are available, including electric woks. Electric induction cooktops are not the old electric coil stoves yesteryear, the ones my wife and I cooked on and hated 50 years ago when we got married. We now use all-electric cooking by choice, including an induction cooktop, and won't ever go back to gas. We've had an electric oven for 15 years with no problems and no repairs. For those of us who are going about retrofitting a house, it's very difficult on a 70-year-old house to go all-electric. We're trying it, we started, we have solar, and now we have electric cooking. We assume we'll have heat pump water heater. All that's very expensive in a 70-year-old house. And finally, one of the speakers spoke about the request in San Mateo for a blanket exemption for affordable housing. They asked for it, but it was not received. The council decided instead to have the burden of proof be put on the developer to prove that they had no other option other than a gas. And so that blanket reduction was, was rescinded. This is because the council felt that they could work together with the developer to come up with a good solution. I hope you're able to do that in Millbrae. Thank you for your time. Please adopt the strong code you have before you tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, the next speaker is Yo-Yo Chue.
Thank you, Mayor Hollibur. I'd like to concur with Councilman Lee's comments regarding less red tape for small businesses. And also Mr. Georgeopoulos, who said that opening and constructing a restaurant is already difficult as it is. It is even more difficult to navigate the red tape at City Hall. I believe there should not be an appeals process. There should not be a process where restaurants would seek an exemption. It should be by right. I can appreciate that there are some situations in which electric cooking is appropriate. For example, if you're making an omelet or heating up frozen food to re-serve to customers. However, at high-paced, fast-paced restaurants where high heat, intensive cooking is required, gas stoves are still the way to go. And that's why you'll find them in hundreds of thousands of premier restaurants around the world, including right here in Millbrae. And specifically to Chinese cooking, which uses the wok. It is very heat-intensive. Furthermore, most restaurants in our city have 100 to 200 amp supplies, power supplies, and requiring any type of new wiring would probably require three-phase, 400 to 500 amps power supplies, which will potentially reduce investment into properties, rental properties in our city because it requires so much tenant improvement before they're ready for a restaurant. Whereas current restaurants, when they're renovated, are considered turnkey. Regarding the solar panels, I think we need to give special consideration for our FAA height limits, making sure that when we are constructing, that requiring rooftop solar, which often adds up to five feet, 10 feet on the top of a building, doesn't result in us losing floors on the top of our new developments, especially our TOD developments. That's going to cost us revenue and potentially housing. Also, reach codes are called reach codes because they reach past standards. And I don't think we're reaching far enough with our EV ordinance. Requiring 6% in certain cases of charging stations is silly, considering you can stand on the Highway 101 overpass. And for every 100 cars, there are way more than six vehicles that are electric. We live in the Bay Area. We should be requiring 100% electric vehicle charging spaces. And we also need to talk about access, like the vice mayor said. For example, the Living Spaces store was required to have two charging stations, but they've been open for, I believe, half a decade now, and not a single chart, not a single car has charged at those stations because nobody can access them. So we should clarify that. We should clarify how residential charging stations will be metered. We should, you know, clarify what access policies for those will be for, for the general public, for example, in a TOD parking lot or in an office building. And I, but I do encourage, I do encourage the step in this direction. Electrification will lead to a greener community. There's always more work to be done, and hopefully, these changes can be made. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Okay, seeing no other public comments, a public comment is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Let's go back to the council. Mr. Lee.
I'd like to make a motion to approve reach codes. I want to thank staff for your hard work. This is, I know, been working on it quite a bit and very impressed. And it's very thorough, but I also want to take out the part where you have to get appeal for, for gas appliances in restaurants. I think that's an overreach. And I don't think, and I understand, I respect everybody's comments on electric woks. Yes, I looked into it, but if you, unless you cook in a restaurant, it's not the same thing as cooking at home. And if you have to be fast, food has to go out fast. And they say of electric wok, you have to take out each ingredient at a time. And when you're cooking with a gas wok, that's not the same, same thing. So unless, you know, unless you actually have to cook, it's, and you have to get your food out fast. I don't, and I don't think we should make restaurants put barrier restaurants to, to, we desperately, our restaurants here are first-class, and I don't want to diminish our, what we have here. So that's my motion.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Lee. Let's go to Vice Mayor Schneider. See a couple hands up.
I, I. Thank you, Mayor. I, I want to.
Sorry.
Would you like to respond? I mean, just, just a point of order here. I, Mike Connor and our city attorney, correct? But I think there is a motion on the floor. So I think technically you should call for a second, then have discussion.
I'll call for a second for discussion, please.
Well, let's finish the discussion first, because I think there might be some disagreement.
That's not the way rubber rules works. You have to have a second before discussion, and I'm happy to second it.
Okay, fair enough. Okay. Vice Mayor Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for Shelley. First of all, for right now, for our restaurants, fully in agree right now that we're trying to make our restaurants work as efficiently as possible. However, the reach codes that we're looking at are for new construction. And if we, what I, I've gone down and talked to a number of restaurants of different types of food. And it's not just our Asian restaurants that want high gas temperature on that. But the reach codes, would they, if we allowed for gas without an exception or requesting an exception, heating, space heating and water heating would still be electric? Is that how the reach codes would work?
Yes.
That's correct.
Only applies to correct.
Okay, so we're really only talking about cooking. And right now, we're really only talking about cooking for commercial restaurants or food churches, things that are mass-feeding people. I'm perfectly okay with that. If we were talking about cooking in affordable housing, it is clearly my understanding that maybe it's existing housing stock for affordable. People living in those homes are more subject to indoor air pollution and removing long-term gas appliances will make them healthier. But that's not what this ordinance is talking about either. So what I would like, I'd love to move forward with this, get it done tonight. But I would love for the city of Millbrae, along with some of the other cities, that are currently looking at the burnout ordinance, which is a way to help people replace their gas appliances with electric appliances over time. So if we could be part of the pilot with that, I think that would really help our residents and our businesses in town. And it's not something, it's my understanding that it takes at least another year to work on that ordinance to get the public education and get them involved in that. So I'm happy to support the Councilman Lee's motion on there, but I don't want us to lose track of affordable housing problem. And we used an example earlier today about biotech. We want that biotech company here in Millbrae. It's on the SFO flight path. It got turned down by the Airport Land Use Commission. However, it's my understanding that biotechs, rather than pulling gas into the entire building, the way you do it is you bring tanks in just for the labs that might need it. That makes the entire building safer should an airplane hit it. So I like us opening or keeping that door open to talk about how some of our new commercial buildings really don't might think they need that exemption, but we can do it another way. We can allow them to have lab-specific gas programs. And if that's too complicated for tonight, I'm happy if we could come back and talk about it. I would love to see that biotech company come to Millbrae.
All right, maybe we can discuss that when that project, if, if, if and when that project comes before the council. Councilwoman Tappan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everybody, to all the speakers. Thank you so much. And I'd love to have Mr. Georgeopoulos's restaurants here. So I don't mind the amendment at this point in time. Millbrae's always taken the lead, and we're very excited about moving forward with this and always open to future advancements. The mayor and I have always gone back and forth as far as EV charging. Some of us want superchargers, but haven't happened yet. But yeah, if we're opening the door here and we have Lucid, who has a permit here, the more charging stations we can have, I think the better. And the faster they are is always better for those of us who have electric cars. And it does bring commercial revenue to our city. So thank you again to everyone, and I support the motion as amended. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for those comments. I had one question on Table 2, this is page 9. For the EV charging stations, multifamily dwellings. So it looks like for, I might be reading this wrong, but it looks like for a building up to 20 units, they're required to have one Level 2 EV-ready space for every unit with parking, which presumably is every unit. But for buildings with more than 20 units, they're only required, the Level 2 spaces are only required for 25% of units. So the way I'm reading that is that a building with 20 units would have more Level 2 spaces than a building with 21 units? Or am I reading that wrong?
Yes, may I respond?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes. So, yes, that is, that is the case, and it does provide kind of a interesting step function there. The idea behind that is to reduce the amount of electrical capacity you might need for larger buildings. And this ordinance, this model took the approach to just draw the line at a particular building size at 20 units. But basically, if you start providing Level 2 for all parking spaces, then your electrical infrastructure just becomes really, really large. So at some point, we chose to draw the line to say, okay, well, at a certain size, most people get Level 1 and, you know, 25% Level 2. Does that make sense?
Okay, yeah, it's just, you know, it's a bit awkward, I guess, the way that it's currently set. So I don't know if maybe it would make more sense for it to be incremental. So, you know, for the first 20 units, it would be required one space for each unit, and then for every additional unit, it would be required 25% Level 2 space for every 25% of additional units beyond 20. Would the maker of the motion be willing to consider that?
Okay, say it again to me so I'm clear.
So, so right now, a building with 20 units would have more EV charging spaces, Level 2, than a building with 21 units, which doesn't make much sense. So how about for buildings with more than 20 units? The first, require one Level EV2-ready space for each, for the first 20 units?
Well, I don't know about this in PCE. Just even having a Level 1 is, is, you know, is, is a step forward. So at this time, I would, I would recommend a minimum of Level 1. Level 2 is.
They are Level 1, yes. They are required a Level 1 for every space.
Yeah. So having a, I think, I think it'd be good if they had the conduit for, you know, for Level, Level 2 or Level 3 available. But I think. But, um, I think that, that, I think that might be kind of difficult. So I'll, 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 I'll be willing to amend.
Well, I mean, it just, it just seems inequitable now that it's, you know, it's heavily burdensome for, you know, smaller multi-unit dwellings. But once they reach twenty-one units, that, that the requirement goes down, so it doesn't, you know, make a whole lot of sense.
I agree with you. I'm, I'm happy to, uh, allow that amendment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, and, um, I, I mean, I, I disagree, I think, with Councilman Lee's other amendment about restaurants. I, I don't see the appeal process as being overly burdensome. It sounds pretty, pretty simple to me to be able to, um, to appeal and, and get the exemption. But, uh, it sounds like I'm in the minority, um, on this, on that item. Um, so I think we have a motion on the table in a second. Um, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Uh, I think, uh, Councilwoman.
Oh, Councilwoman Aliva, did you have your hand up?
I did. I was being.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say, I, I would support the motion. And I, I think that pulling the rug from underneath everybody right now in these economic times. Well, I think that Shelley's report is right on. And I could only speculate that we're going to be right where, right there where she presented. And I'd like to be on the proactive side and the stronger side of all of the, like all the speakers spoke. Sometimes you just have to have a little bit of, uh, consideration for the times we're in. And pulling the rug from under all of our, our restaurants right now might not be the time to, uh, do that, but be considerate. So we might, um, start, uh, with this and educate the restaurants. I'm sure they're, I'm sure they're all aware of it, but we might want to let them know that we are looking towards being, um, all-electric in the near future. So, um, I would support the amendment that, uh, Councilman Lee has suggested.
Okay, thank you. And it's also worth noting that these codes only would, uh, last through, I believe, twenty twenty-two. So, uh, just over two more years. And at that point, there would be a, a new, um, building code cycle, um, coming from the state. Um, and an opportunity at that time to, my, my guess is, you know, two years from now, the, the codes are going to be looking a lot stronger than they are.
Exactly.
Now, um, so we'll, we'll have an opportunity to revise, uh, the reach codes at that time. Okay, um, we have, yes, sorry, Councilman Lee.
Did the, did, did the person who accepted the second motion accept the amendment that, uh, you proposed? Are you okay with that, uh, Councilwoman Aliva?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, oh, sorry, Mr. Connor, I see your hands up.
A couple of things. First of all, the motion should, uh, introduce the ordinance, waive the first reading and uniquely here, uh, set a public hearing for your next council meeting on November tenth. Staff didn't have time to notice this hearing for tonight, so, uh, some cities do it this way. So we're gonna wait for, have that specific date. Um, and then secondly, Mayor, I just want to make sure I understood the wording of your exception. I, I just want to be clear on what the two, what the two amendments are to the, to the, uh, ordinance that was, you know, included in the, in the board, in the council packet.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't, I may not have articulated it very well. But on, uh, page nine, table two, um, for the multifamily dwellings.
Right.
It would be for buildings with more than twenty units, um, require one level two EV-ready space for the first twenty units.
Which is twenty?
And, uh, uh, twenty units with parking.
Okay.
Um, and then twenty-five percent of additional, when then once, right, level two ready space for, uh, twenty-five percent of additional units beyond.
Over, over twenty?
Yeah, so, uh, sort of a phase in, or, yeah, a tiered system in a way. Um, okay.
And are we clear, are, in terms of the appeal on the restaurant? Are we making? Are we taking out the appeal language?
Yes.
That requirement, yes. So that would be conditional exception six does not, is not an exception. I mean, that's a by right. That's right. Right? In other words, there would be no requirement for non-residential buildings with a for-profit restaurant open to the public. Right. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lee.
I am proud of this council for continuing being leaders in environmental stewardship and eliminating plastic bags and plastic straws. Um, and this is just another example of our leadership, and I'd say yay.
Councilmember Pappen.
Ditto that, yay.
Councilmember Aliva.
Ditto. I.
Vice Mayor Snyder.
Hi.
Mayor Oliver.
Hi. The council introduced and waived the first reading, set public hearing on November tenth to consider our ordinance to amend the energy code of Millbrae Municipal Code for Title twenty-four, Part Six Energy Code and Part eleven Green Building Code to adopt local reach code to introduce greenhouse gas emission with amendments.
Okay, thank you very much.
Five.
Five zero. Thank you very much, uh, for all the work on this. And, um, look forward to seeing it again at the next, uh, meeting, uh, for the second reading. Okay, um, let's go to council comments. It's been a long night, so if we can keep it brief, that would be wonderful. Uh, let's start with, uh, Councilman Lee.
Uh, yes, thank you, and, uh, this will be, um, along the Peninsula Clean Energy. They have, uh, they're, they're working on the, um, grants for cars. Um, and they're not, they're, they're taking out the luxury electric cars. So, um, there are grants available for electric cars and particularly for people who have, uh, limited means. Um, and also they continue to provide, uh, electric backup power for, for people who have medical needs, um, especially in times when, when there's fires and, and the, uh, power is cut off. And also they added, uh, L, um, Los Banyos has, has joined Peninsula Clean Energy. So that's pretty exciting. They have the largest solar panel, um, farm that, uh, at, and is energy invested in, a half a billion dollar project. Uh, that was pretty scary vote. So, and then, um, and the, and the, uh, associate barrier governments and the housing committee that I'm on, um, we talked about the, um, the, uh, regional housing needs allocations, uh, again. And then we also talk about future plans and also how a lot of these regulations are coming up. Um, we talked about it already in the council, uh, in terms of SB three thirty and that sort of, um, regulations. And, uh, so basically, right now, I sent out a email to all council members and mayors, uh, in the county and gave them an update on the regional, uh, housing allocation needs, which is something that all cities have to go through and, uh, and were allocated so many housing units we have to build. Um, and there were many methods and there was some discussion and the final vote will happen in December when I'm off the, when I'm off the, uh, A-bag. And, uh, right now, it looks like Sam, Mill, Millbrae is gonna, if by calculation, Millbrae will be obligated to build six, six hundred units of, uh, low-income housing. So that's gonna be a challenge. Um, but I think we are, we're up to it. We bet our arena numbers, um, in, in planning. So the next step is to get them built. That's, that's the other thing. Um, so that's, uh, I think that's pretty much it. I'll, I'm gonna leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Lee. Uh, let's go to Councilwoman Pappen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Lee, for all your hard work on A-bag. Greatly appreciate it. Uh, reminder, the Lions Club giveaway this Saturday, very popular. Also, the ongoing Halloween decorations contest and Halloween carving and our Halloween movie. So hopefully, everybody can join us as well as Millbrae's opening up their voting center so you can vote in person. Still drop it in the mail or the, um, box in front of City Hall. Thank you to legal counsel tonight for clarifying the Brown Act and how it applies to subcommittees. Hopefully, this makes it easier on all council members. Congratulations to the city of Millbrae on the census. We went from seventy-eight point eight to eighty-two point eight. So good job there. And San Mateo County, I believe, was number one in the state as far as census returns. So wonderful news there. And congratulations to the county of San Mateo to move from to the orange level. So thank you to all Millbrae residents and businesses for continuing to be safe and wearing your masks. It's a great idea and it's also helpful to everyone here. Also ask that hopefully by the next meeting, we can have a revision of the, um, public records requests in Millbrae so that we can be a little more, um, accurate in who's making requests and, um, call for identification. If not, then require the individuals requesting the information appear at the, um, City Hall so that we don't have, um, misinformation about people requesting, uh, certain, um, public records requests, because it takes a lot of city time and taxpayer money, but records are available and they will continue to be available. Just asking that we make sure, um, whoever's making a request is actually making those requests. So I'm, hopefully, we can refine those, um, applications. And as the city of San Mateo does as well, too, if applications are made after a campaign filing period, all candidates are notified. Um, that way, it just makes it easier for everybody. So just to improve the system overall and the accuracy, I hope we can, um, approach that at the next meeting. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, let's go to Councilwoman Aliva.
I'm gonna give this my best shot. The dogs are going a little wild here, so I apologize for the background noise if that comes up. But I gotta say that my, my favorite meeting this whole, that, since the last two weeks, has been the Senior Advisory Committee meeting. And it was the first time we had the opportunity to meet, or I had the opportunity to meet with them via Zoom. And they're very engaged and very excited and moving along. So, uh, thank you, Mackenzie, and thank you, Adrian, uh, city staff members that, um, put, put all that together and, uh, keeping that rolling along. Um, tomorrow I meet with the Hart Board and recently met with Sal. Of course, both those, uh, committees are a little bit, uh, stagnant with the situation we're all in with the COVID. But that doesn't, uh, mean that, um, I'm not working. I'm attending these meetings. The Airport Land Use, as Councilmember Snyder, uh, or Vice Mayor Shire had alluded to, we met last Wednesday. We had staff there and, uh, we did not conform to, um, a vote that would allow for them to advise, uh, the county to go forward with, uh, what we wanted to do with the biotechs. So I'm, I'm assuming that, um, if council wants to go forward with that, we'll be, uh, educated. And of course, we can, we can do other things with that. But we did give it our best shot, give it our best fight. And, um, I attended along with staff, uh, Mike, Mike Conran. Our attorney did an incredible, um, presentation. And I thank you, Mike, for, uh, working with me to see if we could get that through, but we'll just have to keep working. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, let's go to Vice Mayor Schneider.
Hi, thank you. Um, CKB PAC met, uh, talked about projects. Um, sadly, my peers on that committee believe that the beds projects are always the ones that get funded. We give competitive grants, but what I have found in my now five years on that committee is that they are competitive. But the, a good number of the grants tend to go to the same entities. They tend to be bigger cities, possibly with better grant writers, uh, more evolved bike plans on that. It's just frustrating when you're a little city that you can't seem to get the assistance and you don't have the same financial resources as, say, South San Francisco. Um, but, uh, more for that in the future. Just want to let everybody know, in case you didn't see it, Burlingame has been working with Caltrain to redo their El Camino and deal with their trees and power to them, those lovely trees. There's a lot of emotion tied into theirs. But in this Caltrans plan, it includes the portion of Millbrae from Murchison to Millbrae Avenue. And they are opening up a online public forum on November sixteenth. It'll be open until December seventeenth, and it still includes a block of Millbrae in it. So I've turned that over to the city manager. And their city manager, Burlingame city manager, has promised to loop Millbrae into that loop so that we're not. I look at, if, if Burlingame does something to El Camino Real in the median strip between Truesdale and Murchison, which is completely their right, um, that may or may not dictate what we would do with our eight lanes in that one block of Millbrae Avenue there. So I hope that we will and staff will keep an eye on that and make sure that whatever happens is something that we will be happy with. Um, the other thing, kind of along what's happening between Millbrae and Burlingame, they are approving a lot of projects, right, almost on the Millbrae border. All of them have transportation design, demand management plans. I was talking to, uh, Councilmember Ortiz from Burlingame. He is a little nervous about the TDMs because they may not be enforceable. So to Millbrae staff, I hope that we are keeping an eye, not necessarily on their TDMs, but on our own to make sure that we can enforce transportation demand management. Because with all these new projects along Rollins Road and right on Murchison or Truesdale, we're gonna see some impacts, uh, some additional impacts on Millbrae Avenue. Um, uh, to add to Councilwoman Pappen, if you're coming down to the candy feed, wear your costume. It's a way to kind of celebrate our kids. And then the last one is again directed at staff, and I don't see, um, Ms. Ryder on here. I'm on the State Ride Recycling Commission, uh, State Ride Recycling Market Development and Curbside Recycling Commission. Our mission is to provide by January ideas for legislation for the state to carry. Right now, the way it is going, it is going to dictate a certain number of materials that can go into curbside programs. And if other materials that cities like ours accept, but do not have a proven market, they won't be allowed to use labeling for it, and they won't be able to partner with the state's marketing for that program. I've been pushing that we are in a dual-stream system. Our system is different than single-stream systems. We have less contamination. We have better markets. Um, but who knows how it's gonna come down? The other thing that's going to happen, and this might help us, um, they're looking at quick fixes that we might recommend to the state for, in Millbrae's case, Safeway Lucky's and Trader Joe's. They're the three stores that have to have redemption centers. When you buy a soft drink, you pay a, a nickel for it. It's so people can get their money back. One of the quick fixes, but we haven't set this in the improvements yet, are reverse vending machines, which will mean if we can get the supermarkets who will push on this, push back to do this, um, planning commissions will need to have a fast-track permitting process to allow reverse vending machines. None of this is law. This is just right now what's being discussed that will go into our recommendations in January. The other thing will be an annual report to every city council that says, okay, you're recycling a ton of material. How much of that is actually going to a real market? How much of it's ending up in Malaysia poisoning or Indonesia or Vietnam poisoning those communities when they burn plastics? So that's kind of the direction coming out of, um, this, this particular commission. And, uh, more will be finalized in January. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, uh, for those comments. Um, let's see, I attended, uh, the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting last night that discussed the, um, annual work plan, which I believe will be coming, um, forward to the council, um, in the next month or so. The Sister Cities Commission meeting was canceled and will be rescheduled for November ninth. Also, I don't know if I, I may have mentioned this in the previous council meeting, but the, uh, RFP for the data center is out. So that's exciting and important, um, economic development project in Millbrae on our, our own property by the Bart Station. Um, I also wanted to thank our city staff for all the work on, around Halloween, um, with the, the drive-in movie, um, this weekend. Uh, the pumpkin carving kits and also the great, uh, decorations we have over by the gazebo. If anyone has not seen that, go check it out. I think that is about all that I have, uh, to report this evening. So thank you, everyone, and please, uh, everyone, don't forget to vote if you have not already. As the city manager mentioned earlier, there are several options, uh, of how to vote, uh, here in Millbrae and in San Mateo County. So with that, we will go ahead and adjourn, and, uh, we will be back, yeah, uh, for our next regular council meeting of November tenth. Thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone.